I'd like to reconvene our meeting and we will start our afternoon session with a report from our subcommittee, Jim McNeese, Deana Horst, and we want to thank Randy Watson for being here with us this afternoon. We'll just turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. At our last meeting, you were kind enough to appoint Deana and I to work with the first schools to be approved by the governor and leaders of the House and Senate Education Committees as Coalition Schools, MacPherson and Concordia. We were to meet with them and bring back to the board recommendations relative to moving forward and how we move forward in the process of meeting the -- not often, I'm tongue-tied, meeting the concerns, issues, and topics that we had brought up in talking about the innovative school law and Coalition Board, and that was the premise on which we worked. So, Deana and Brad and I met with Randy and Bev in Salina in early June and spent about two and a half, maybe almost three hours at work on this task. It's very important. It's an opportunity in terms of the board working with the legislature and the governor in terms of providing opportunities for innovation within our state, but also at the same time making sure that ensuring that the Board of Education, State Board of Education, is indeed a major player and a partner in this process. I think the recommendations that we have that you were going to go over here in a moment meet those goals, and I'll let Deana talk about the points, the guiding points that we have developed.
Well, the first paragraph is really just sort of an introduction of the legislation that has taken place and what, how many school districts could be involved, et cetera, and last year there was a specification of what their qualifications to be involved would be in the increase of districts. And as you can see, and I think all of us know that in February, MacPherson and Concordia were approved by the governor and the chairs of the Senate and House Education Committees to become the first two districts to form that Coalition of Innovative School District Board. So, if you'll follow along with me, we have nine points. The first being that all of us, the governor, the legislature, and the State Board of Education have always been interested in promoting innovation. So, we have no question that innovation is something that we all want to see occur. The second point actually is more of a statement that just simply talks about the constitutional and statutory responsibilities that the State Board of Ed have to school districts in the state of Kansas and to education in its totality. The third point talks about the State Board of Ed having direct responsibility and oversight of the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board and that the State Board will continue to exercise discretionary functions when reviewing applications submitted under the Act, and that's part of the legislation. And also, the fact that we are to provide direct direction for those districts that submit an application. Number four, upon request, and that's an importance, two words, the districts comprising of the Coalition of Innovative Districts Boards will, shall be waived of all laws and regulations under the control of the State Board of Ed per the guidelines of the Coalition of Innovation Districts Law. That's actually in the law. So, we had an agreement with the two innovative districts to say upon request. So, we all know what kinds of things they want to pilot. Point five, the Coalition of Innovative Districts is to develop bylaws that establish how they're going to operate, and those bylaws and any changes to the bylaws, just as the Activities Association comes before us with their changes, we will be the body that approves those. And the State Board of Ed will appoint two board members to serve as voting members on the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board, and the Commissioner of Education or his or her designee will serve as a permanent voting member on that board as well. And point eight, in areas not under the control of the State Board of Education, this one of our concerns, as you remember, was that much of what has been asked to be waived, we have no authority to waive. So, what we have promised to the innovative school districts is that we will assist them in that waiver process and partner with them as well to make those changes that need to be changed, whether they're on the federal level or whether they're in state law, because some of them are in statute. Point nine, the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board will report to the State Board of Education two times a year, and we will have to talk about when those dates are, but there will be two times when they report what they are doing and what the success is, what the problems are. So, we know what everything is that is happening within those districts. We know how we can be of assistance and what kinds of changes we might need to make. So, with that...
The guidelines that we have here will be the basis and be included in the bylaws, you know, of the Coalition Districts Board.
And in the order.
And one of the things that we're going to be doing here in just a few minutes is, our recommendation is, quite frankly, to approve MacPherson and then approve Concordia's application as an innovative district and start the Coalition Board. And we have, and here, Mark is going to tell us about an order that we're obliged, that this is part of, or this is included in, that basically leads us to that motion.
Is it appropriate before Mark comments to, if people have questions about the wording of this, of these guidelines?
If you'd like to do that.
Do you think?
That'd be appropriate.
To discuss that first, I think while we are fresh in our minds about. So, are there questions about the guidelines? And I see Steve Roberts had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a set number for the size of the board since the, our board will have two members and the commissioner will have a designee or be a voting member? That's three votes.
There is a law.
There is a set number? What is that number?
Randy, you remember that number?
By the law, any school district that you approve also goes onto the board.
As a voting member?
There was a limit of how many.
Correct. There's a limit of the total number of districts that could ever be approved by the state.
Oh, okay. So, it's 20% now, so it's 50-something?
Yeah, it's 10% of all the school districts and then 10% of focus and priority school districts, which is a very small number. It really isn't 10% of the whole school districts.
Okay.
So, I didn't add those. Brad may know what that total number is.
To clarify, all of those schools become a member, voting member of the Coalition Board?
Pete?
I believe that's correct.
So, the first 10% could be up to 29.
Right.
So, if we had, but you have to apply first, and once you're approved as a district, you become a voting member. The next 10% of schools can only be those that have priority or focus, which would be another 29, but there's only 19 of them. But, so potentially, you could have 49 members if 49 school districts applied, but the board consists of whoever applies and is approved, then they now have a seat on the Coalition Board.
I hope you can appreciate the nature. My question is, what percent, you know, weight will we have as having three votes?
And if I could, the Coalition Board by law would have to vote first before another district would come forward to you. So, initially, you'll have the majority, but at some time, that'll be a minority, you assume. If there, if that many districts, right now, only eight total districts, including Concordia and MacPherson, have asked for applications, so.
And just to make a point, too, the Coalition Board can recommend, and then the State Board makes the final approval.
Or gives them authority.
Gives them authority.
So, in essence, we would have two members on a board that might have 40 people on it.
We'd have two board members and one from the department, the commissioner's.
Yeah, I just didn't realize that everyone that was approved as an innovative district was part of their board, so that was a misunderstanding on my part. Steve, was that Sally Cobble?
I got a couple of questions here. Thank you, guys. I thought what you did for us was great, and you listened to us. On number six and on number seven, you have the word permanent voting members. You're not talking about the two people that were actually elected to be on that board, but that the position of this board has two members to be permanent?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if that's really as clear as we, I don't have that a word.
In the bylaws, we'll make sure it's real clear. In the bylaws, we'll make sure that's very clear.
Okay, okay. And then, in the law or whatever, is it called an innovative district board or is it called an innovative district council?
It's Coalition.
Coalition board, I believe.
Coalition board.
So, it's called a board?
In the law, Sally, it's called the Coalition of Innovative District Board.
Board.
That's what was actually in the statute.
Okay. Usually, and maybe, Mark, you're going to come to this, but sometimes you have a clause in it, and I don't know if we need it, but if the board, if that board would ever dissolve, how that happens, do you, do we have anything in there?
Would be in the bylaws, wouldn't it?
Well, you can, you can address that in the bylaws, but there's, it says, "The chairperson shall serve a term of five years," talks about a successor. It doesn't say anything about the disbandment of the Coalition Board. So, it's not, and that's something that can be addressed in the bylaws, but as long as those innovative districts are continuing to exist and continue to go through the renewal process, then there's no ending date, not in the statute.
You took away all my fears that I had about this board, except for one, and you cannot do that. And some, I have always worried about this being a board that parallels with us and is going down the track, one on one rail and us on the other, and that there's a possibility of some people across the street that can start giving more authority to one and ignoring the authority of the other. And I am sure that there isn't any way that we can totally, you know, put us all on one rail to make sure, but I think you guys have come the closest that it's possible to do, and I want to thank you for that.
I'd like to share one other thing that kind of isn't in this, but it probably should be, but should certainly be there, is we're trying to provide direction, too, to the Department of Ed and what they can and can't do. And as Brad has said, you know, it's a two-way street. We may be coming to them and saying, "Here's something we'd like to do innovative, and we're looking for some districts who could do that, and would they work with us?" So, it's going to be a two-way street. That's how we view it, not just a one-way street. We're just not going to be reactionary. I think they might be even a little surprised at the innovation that we bring to them, and I hope that be the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a few questions, and maybe I just simply don't totally understand it. Number four, upon request, the board shall be waived of, they shall be waived of all laws and regulations under our control. Excuse me, I thought according to the law that was passed, there were some things that we could not waive, like accreditation.
Sure.
And accreditation would include teacher licensure and things like that, and I thought, some of those apps I saw, they wanted some exemption for licensure and things. I mean, that was my understanding, so I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
We're including whatever the law says.
Yes, yeah.
So, we're not saying all, because accreditation is under our, is under our control, I guess. That's what I, because it says of any, of all laws and regulations, under the control of the State Board.
And the way that I view this is that, number four, we're talking about the things we have the ability to do, to the things we can waive. Number nine talks about those laws that, whether they be rules and regs on the federal, you know, in the Department of Education, federal law, or whether it be state law. That's where we will come, we will try to be partners with, with the, as we have in the past with federal law.
Right, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking strictly state.
And seeking waivers.
I'm talking strictly state.
So, but there are some of the laws you're talking about that are, something to say on this, state law.
No, I mean, but the...
They're in state statute.
No, I mean, the statute that was for innovative districts, I thought excluded accreditation.
Correct.
Right.
QPA.
That's my thought, yeah, okay.
But if anything needs to be changed in that, and we agree, then those changes need to be made to state statute, is what I'm saying.
I see what you're saying, okay, I understand that. Okay, then my next one would be on nine. How are we going to measure success, or is that going to be determined at a later time?
Be determined.
That will be determined?
And there is some, in the law, it does specify, and I don't want to get real...
There's some speci...
There's some specificity, and they have to show improvement on assessments and...
Well, you know, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I think this could certainly serve us well, because I think if we do waive certain things and we find that they're waiving and they're working well, why don't we just change it here? So, because if it's good for two or three districts, it's good for the state, you know? So, to me, eventually, that would be the purpose, to me, that's the purpose, I would think, that we would look for, you know?
That's exactly correct, in terms of what, as we see it, as an incubator for change.
Exactly.
That they can do that, make those changes operate under a different set of rules, if you will, that they seem, that are believed to be hindering or stopping them from being successful, as they could be, and if it works for them, then it should work for everyone.
Well, is there, is there...
That's what I see the innovative, the whole innovative program.
I agree with that 100%, but now, I guess to follow up with on that is, what if we try this and we can't show success? We either show stabilization or maybe a downhill movement. I mean, how long do we allow this to continue, I guess?
There are some specifics in the law that deal with that.
The law deals with that.
Does it? Okay, I did not know that, okay.
And I think, Janet, the key, it says it in the law, and really what we're after, if we don't improve student success or the things that are asked to be waived out of don't have some likelihood that they will improve student success, we shouldn't approve them, if that makes sense. I mean, there should be some brought to the Coalition Board and ultimately to you, says, "We think if we do this, we will have this outcome." Now, it has to go be tried in a very small, you know, pilot way, I guess, but that's the ultimate. Are students going to be more successful in graduation rates and post-secondary success, et cetera? And did these things that we waived out of make a difference in that? The thing could be, as you said, possibly given to all school districts.
It shouldn't be just, "It's going to make my life a little easier."
Right.
It has to show concrete data that it's being successful.
Are we going to put a timeline on that? I mean, is it going to be two years, five years, 10 years?
There is a timeline, I think it's within five years.
So, they have five years to show?
Yeah, or in their application, they would probably say, you know, this is, it's going to, in two years, we should be seeing this, or, but five years is the, in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I believe they have to be reauthorized every five years, so if I remember correctly. Randy Snoddy.
While we're discussing item number four, I was a little concerned about the wording because it sounds like anything that we have control of, accreditation, licensure, shall be waived. And so, Mark and I were having a side conversation here, and Mark had a suggestion about that.
Okay.
I was just, yeah, because I think it is a little ambiguous that it reads that if it's requested and you have the authority to waive those, or if that's within your...
Correct, if it's within our authority.
It shall be waived, so it probably should be "may," right? Because you're intended to retain the discretion as to whether or not you actually, the board actually will waive.
If you define "shall" as a mandate, it probably should be, you know, "may be waived," you know?
Maybe, right, "shall," "shall."
May.
I mean, statutory, statutory interpretation would say that if it's...
Correct.
If it's used the word "shall," then it would be a mandatory, and you don't have that discretion.
I think we tried to mirror the law on that and make sure, I think we tried to mirror your guidance documents on some issues in the law and some issues in the, and then still make sure that you have constitutional control. So, I think that's, I'd have to go back, I don't have the law in front of me, but I think that's what we tried to do.
But keep in mind, that was the, that was the basic juxtaposition that we had, is that we didn't think we, that's where this board disagreed with that element of the law, saying that we have the authority to waive certain laws, and so if the language remained, "shall," and it was mandatory, then I would advise the board that I would have some concerns with that. But if it's "may," "may be waived," then the board retains its discretion to evaluate whether or not those items that are under the control of the State Board will be waived within your discretion.
So, what you're recommending is, it would read, "Upon request, the district comprising, the Coalition of Innovative Districts Board may waive all laws and regulations under the control of the State Board."
Or "may waive any laws or regulations under the control of the State Board."
I'm good with that, it works for me.
I think the only concern I would have with that is, it just seems to me that the law pretty much sets that and...
Says?
Says what?
Shall.
The "shall." So, my concern is that, that we would find ourselves in a battle, and frankly, I don't know that we need battles. So, "may," with this board is probably not, not an issue, but with another board, it may be. And I'm trying to scan this really quickly and see if I can find where it says.
While you're scanning that, just to remind the board, I mean, that was the basic foundation of our discussion and perhaps our, the concern arose from KSA 72-1923, subpart E1, which said that, you know, except for those that, those rules or those laws that must be applied, that the public innovative district shall be exempt from all laws and rules and regulations that are applicable to school districts. So, that was the foundation upon which we had some concern about making it a, not discretionary within the board's authority.
Well, getting back to my first concern, would that mean we could waive them from accreditation or licensure rules?
No, because it...
The law says you can't.
Excuse me?
It won't allow you, the law doesn't allow you to waive accreditation or, and a licensure is kind of a piece of the...
But this says laws, it will be waived of laws.
Of the QPA law. So, as... So, as I remember, Dan, Fred.
There are certain things within the statute that says innovative districts have to follow. One of those is accreditation. But with this approach, in accreditation, this board can waive a school district from any regulation within accreditation, and that's still there. So, when you look at number four, the, the statute itself says they have to follow QPA. But within QPA, this board can waive any school district because there's a waiver process within QPA. And, and so, I, I just envision it, this doesn't mean that McPherson doesn't have, have to have licensed teachers, but I could see it being that McPherson says, hey, I need to pilot something here. Can I be waived from this piece of accreditation so I can get someone, so, because the law says they have to follow accreditation, School Finance and Quality Performance Act.
It kind of, in the law, says two things, says the same, says what we say here. And it says, on one hand, you can't waive these things, but on the other hand, you can waive these things, anything else. Okay? We don't know what anything else is. And I think one of the big things is, is that whatever is going to be waived will eventually have to be approved by us. That's the bottom line. That's what they've agreed to. Now, you can say shall, or may, or will, you know, and there is some interpretation when you get the law, that you are compelled to do this. Well, if it doesn't violate the law itself, you know, we probably should be thinking about the waiver and what it should mean. And it is one of those little bumps in the road here. It could be big in some future time, in some perfect world, it's probably not going to work completely. But this is the agreement that we came up to move forward in a way that meets the concerns that we heard at the last several meetings regarding this legislation and moving forward on this, you know? And our recommendation, quite frankly, is, is that, you know, we don't have, well, our recommendation, we don't have a whole lot of leeway when it comes to some parts of the law, just like the innovative districts don't. You know, we can't approve what we can't approve, we don't have authority to, and there are things that they can't ask to have waivers from because the law says they can't. You know, but if they ask us for a reasonable, if they ask us for a waiver, and it gets through the, the board and comes to this group, you have the final word of whether you go forward or don't go forward with it. And then it becomes the tussle if you say no, and they want to do it, and it, it get into that lawyer thing.
Well, just point of clarification, I'm not trying to derail, I think the rest of it sounds good.
No, no, I appreciate.
But clearly, words have meaning, and shall and may are, you know, mandatory and discretionary. So, all I was trying to point out to Janet's point and Janet's point, it, if you read item number four and you leave in shall, it appears that it is mandatory and there remains no discretion. So, it's, it's very, I, I was simply suggesting that to make it, to, for this board to retain its discretion in those when it comes, I, I think a simple fix would be changing shall to may. Now, I do recognize, as Randy pointed out, they were trying to track the language, but the language in our, in my opinion is, it needs to be may rather than shall, so that this board retains its authority to, to make that discretionary decision when something comes from, for a request.
Yeah, I can see that we can waive regulations. I don't see how we could waive a law, and that's what this says to me. And so, anyway, that's what just popped up all of a sudden. Sally Cobble.
Thank you. When we talk about there are things that might need to be changed and that we might need to partner with and go across the street and fight for, when you're getting into the details, this is the board meeting that we start talking about those things. So, I think that one of the two times that they would need to report and we would need to start working together for some changes in some things is June. And I just wanted to put that in the back of people's minds that are going to be frightened in this stuff up.
Just not with the legislature, but with the regions, you know? Yeah, I understand.
This is the meeting that we do that.
Sure.
And it would be great. That would be one of the points of the board.
That, I, I think that's a good observation and recommendation.
And with two board members on, on this board, you will have reports on a regular basis, which those members should be telling you what the ideas, what those innovative ideas are. And if we see one of those that we have some questions about, I think it would be perfectly fine if they would come before us and explain what they've got in mind, and if we think they've stepped out of bounds so far that they're either jeopardizing themselves in some way, some funding issues, or maybe the entire state, we, and the funding for all districts, then we have some, some say in, in those kinds of things. So, I think we retain, in my opinion, we, we retain that, and I understand what Mark's saying, but I think another thing that we have to think about is the shall gives, gives permission to at least go out and pilot, that we're not going to sit here and nitpick every little law that they ask to be waived. So, there may be something that will be so successful that it changes the way we do business in education in Kansas. And why would we want to stand in that way and be a roadblock for that?
I think the devil's in the details, and shall is a detail that we need to respect, but also, the next meeting, if we are to go forward, would be June 30th, where we'll start developing the bylaws. And there's not a timeline in terms of having them back here, you know, by August, but within a reasonable frame of time, which I'd say no more than three months, probably two, to bring the bylaws back to this board for their approval, or for their review, and then approval the next meeting, you know? That's, that's where the real details are going to be. And I, I really, in, I guess, conclusion, if, if any more questions are there, Randy and Bev have been really good to work with. They have taken a bold position in terms of providing, to meet the expectations of this board, in terms of retaining our authority and oversight in education, you know, according to the Constitution. And I, I give the other them credit. They, they are, they've done a great job in their districts, and I think they feel a great responsibility for the future, you know, that, that the innovative Coalition Board does not become a board that works outside the authority and the oversight of the State Board. So, I think that, that's an important feature because we, as we said in the start, all are the entities who are involved with this, from the legislature and governance office, the State Board, to the innovative schools, are all looking for the same thing, improved education. Sometimes, you know, egos get a little bit in the way, mine does often, but at the same time, they have stepped up to the plate as the first two schools, you know, school districts to be recognized, and said, we need the State Board not only as a partner and as, and, but as a co-leader, but also to provide us the support and direction and approval that we need to go forth in our state to make this work. So, I give it to them and I give it to you credit for taking a bigger and broader view of this legislation than hunkering down in corners and yelling at each other and forgetting that it's the kids we serve. So, thank you to them, and thank you for you, for having the patience and listening right now about the next direction.
We do have a couple other comments. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks to our board members for working on this and bringing this to us today. And I know, Randy, you've answered, answered a few questions, but I'd just like to hear from you as the representative today here from the Coalition District and these nine guidelines that have been developed, and your thoughts.
Well, as Jim said, Kathy, I, I think we went into this from the, from the school district perspective, A, always wanting to be a partner with the State Board, and B, acknowledging that the State Board has a constitutional right to oversee education in Kansas. How do you balance that with then freeing up innovation? That's what you're struggling with, and that's what we struggled with. How do you put that in language to give some broad authority, which is kind of scary, at the same time, still providing the constitutional oversight that we believe that you should have? And I, I think we spent two, three hours, and then back and forth, sharing drafts, trying to, to capture that. And I, I know that Bev and I feel very, very good about this. You know, it, at no time, when, when, in our involvement, personally for me, or our involvement with McPherson, and our, and our local board, do we ever want this not to be focused on the success of students? And so, I'll give you a wild one. So, what if, what if a school district put in their waiver, we only want to go to school 10 days a year? How would that lead to successful outcomes? And I, I can't see our board would ever pass that. I think you have to be assured, though, by your representation, that this doesn't become, as Sally said, a parallel path that tries to, and that's a difficult balance for you to wrestle with, and I appreciate the wrestling with it. We like the nine areas. We think it's a, a good compromise of all the interests that are trying to be brought to bear. And we look, I look forward and excited to where this is going to go in the future. And I think, if done right by both the Coalition Board and the State Board, this can be an opportunity for us to do some really good things on a very small scale that maybe then could be large scale done in the state of Kansas. I hope I answered you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate you sharing with us, and it sounds like both groups work together very well, so I appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
Ken Wellard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments have to do with item four as well. And I just believe, it seemed, first of all, I guess I don't understand what the request is that's being referred to in the first two words, that phrase. What is, what are they requesting?
Whatever they're requesting.
Changes.
Whatever changes, innovations.
Whatever waiver.
Are they requesting permission?
Yes.
Approval?
Yes.
When the law says shall be waived, that's, that's where I'm confused about number four. It seems to me that if we change shall to may, all this is just words and paper that are wasted. It doesn't really do anything. The law says, if I'm not mistaken, that these, these schools, these districts will be waived of all, of the requirements of all laws and regulations administered by the State Board of Education, period. Not if we decide to waive them or not, subject to the provisions of the law. The law says some things cannot be waived.
Sure.
All right? But other than that, it says that they shall be waived. So, do these school, do we go through this little, this kind of routine where they come and ask us for what we, what they already have? That's, I guess that's my confusion. And then I'm, I'm afraid that we'll come out of this with a statement that says that these board, these, these school, school districts may be waived of the regulations, which renders the whole thing useless, because it still has the, the State Board of Education as the gatekeeper to innovation, which we should not be. And that's not the intent of the law, in my view. So, I'd like to ask Randy, Randy, what does, what would you be requesting if you came? What are you requesting approval of? And what will be the effect of changing shall to may, in your view?
Well, I think it's that balance that I just spoke about with Kathy, Ken, is that this board needs oversight through the whole process constitutionally. I think we believe that. The same time, you're going to have to give up some everyday control over some of the laws and regulations as the law says. And that's where your representation on whoever that may be, on that Coalition Board can, and as Chair, can help steer in the right direction. But I think we tried to mirror that out, out of the law, which the law says shall. And so, the request simply would say, we, we've brought something that's been vetted in the Coalition Board and brought it to you, and that shall be waived if it's statutorily within the statute.
So, it's a formality? That this board is not going to say no to one of those? Am I correct?
Could.
Something that's waived by the law?
Certainly, the board could.
I mean, I need, I need, I need an instance. I need an example, because I don't understand. It seems to me that we're, we're playing with words here. If, if the law says that it shall be waived, and they come and ask us, and we say no, then it shall not be waived. And we, we're at odds with what the law says in that case.
Mark's leaning forward.
Well, I mean, my interpretation of, of what's been presented to the board is, is this is a solution to, to conflicting proposals. One is, when we were here last month, the general discussion of the board was, we can't approve them carte blanche. We either deny them, or we, we can't, because we can't, we can't waive certain. I know you, you disagree with that outcome, or with that, with that principle, but that was the advice that I gave the board last month, and it looked like there was a, a general consensus that there was a discomfort with giving up authority of this board and completely granting that authority to the Coalition Board. In my opinion, this is a solution that merges the two, that provides some linkage back to this board, that allows this board to go forward and, and support innovative districts, but yet fill in the gaps where there was uncertainty and discomfort on this board to allow the board to, to have an input where the law does not provide it. Candidly, we've talked about that. That doesn't, that, it, it does say shall in the law, but it was my opinion that that was unconstitutional to delegate that to the Coalition Board. The solution, though, that's been presented is that the Coalition Board has come forward and said, we're not going to fight you on that, we're going to work together hand in hand and come up with a compromise. So, it's not just words. I mean, words mean something, and you're right, the guidelines that are being proposed, I'm saying it should be shall, so that you, or should be may, so that you can retain the discretion.
So, Mark, in other words, you don't agree with what's been brought to us? You think it needs to still be changed to shall, so the State Board has.
To may. I agree.
To may.
That's correct.
And that, that's not what they brought to us. That's not what they agreed upon, on this, on this committee that we, that we assigned to this task. So, I, I'm.
You're free to vote over my, I'm just pointing out.
I understand, but the fact is.
That's my concern.
You said that, I, I don't want to get into an unnecessary debate, but you said they brought to us a proposal that we can accept, that they, we've agreed upon, but we've only agreed upon it if we change it to, to may, which is not what they brought to us.
Well, all of it's a work in progress. I mean, I brought guidance documents that were never, I mean, they're bringing to you a recommendation that's subject to the full, the full debate of the board, so there may be other, other words or, or language that might need to be tweaked as well.
The issue of, of moving forward is that this is like step two. There's still step three. There's still step three, four, and five yet to come. Step two is we brought back some guidelines that we worked with Randy and Bev to develop and bring back to the board. The next step is to go back and create bylaws that we will then bring back to the board, you know? And quite frankly, I don't know if we're ever going to get to that point where we're all going to be on a straight line. There's going to be some variation and some variation interpretation, but the strides we've made in terms of, of bringing the two sides together, we're about as close as you can be. But there are some stumbling blocks yet before us, because many of the things we talk about are all about speculation of what's going to happen and such. And truly, you don't have to think about just the players that are there today, but you also have to think about the people who will come, who will follow you, and how they're going to react to the conversations, you know? So I think what we brought to you is, is a solid piece of, of negotiation and hard work that gets us to the next phase. Instead of just saying yes or no and going to our corners, it gives us something to continue the discussion, and we'll have more of these discussions, and we'll have more clarity as we move forward. And yes, there is some level of trust we have with Randy and Bev, and they've earned it.
I would like to clarify, because Ken, I think you misunderstood my concern. It wasn't to say that we would be in a position of saying yea or nay. It was that I can see that we could waive regulations, but I can't see that we can waive a law. And so that's just my own interpretation. It wasn't the control issue. It was just what is, what is legal, and I'm-
I'm not sure about the law thing.
I'm perfectly pleased with what has come out of this. I said from the beginning, I wanted a collaborative effort to help us maneuver through this difficult issue, and these people have worked hard to do that. I wasn't trying to throw a wrench into anything. It was just my own thinking of, of that particular difficult issue. So, John Bacon has a comment.
Madam Chair.
Ken, you have a-
I still have the floor, please. I too think that you've done a wonderful job of drawing up a document that brings us together. I don't want to see us stray from it. That's what I'm trying to say. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen. If we, if the words don't mean anything, we can forget this whole thing. But what the law says shall, and your document says shall, and I'm good with that. I had a question about the request piece, because I don't, I think that may be in there just to make everyone feel all right, and that's okay. But the fact of the matter is, there is a dramatic difference between shall and may, and that's not a step that I want us to take. And so I was not having objection, I was concerned about what you were saying, Madam Chair. I was not responding or reacting to what you said at all. My concern is, what I fear is the move to try to, you know, you, Madam Chair, you said we can't waive the law, but here, in effect, that's what we're going to do if we say may instead of shall.
I guess it depends on what law you're talking about. I don't know.
I'm talking about the law that creates these districts.
Well, that wasn't my interpretation, so there again.
I know it wasn't, but the fact of the matter is, if we put ourselves at odds with the law, that's, in my view, not the step we want to take.
And Madam Chair, there are some, some people who think of regulations as law, because in a sense they are.
Well, and that's-
So I think that statement isn't that far, far off, because if you're talking about statutes, you're talking about statutes. Laws include rules and regulations. Just, just from a-
Let's take John-
Maybe, maybe an attorney can set me straight, but-
Well, um-
That was my understanding as a legislator.
Everybody has their own kind of perception of what words mean. John Bacon, did you have a comment before we move on?
Well, I guess my question was on number four, too. I, I don't know how that would ever apply. If the law says they're already exempt, I was wondering if Randy or Beverly could think of a law that you're already exempt from that you would ever come and try to get a waiver from us? Just seems like it's an exercise of futility. I mean, there's no need. You're already exempt of-
The, the true, and we're all pointing a little bit Andy Griffith lawyer, I think, here without a license, so we apologize to people that have that. My interpretation, true interpretation of law would be that. What we're trying to do is marry what we believe is a constitutional authority to oversee education with a law that leaves a lot of questions to be answered. And so we're trying to put those two together, John. I think the law, by the law itself, says, "Your way, go forth, do whatever you want." And we're saying there needs to be a balance in that, so that everyone can feel good about the direction that we're going to take.
So, and the, the law does add the word rules, which we didn't include in our, so I don't know if you wanted to add laws, rules, and regulations, or did you leave rules out on purpose?
I always liked rules. I didn't say that more. It wasn't left out for any particular reason. You know, we wanted it on one page.
Okay. Thank you.
We didn't want to bring back a lengthy document that answered everything. I think there'll be more answers in the bylaws, you know, because there's really two parts here. Number one is, how do we work with, you know, the innovative school, you know, schools? And we've given you a blueprint that adds to the legislation. In fact, adds to it in a very large way. And at the same time, asking for your permission to go forth and bring the bylaws back to you for, for a vote. But we're also asking, quite frankly, that you approve the innovative schools, you know, that, that we have before us, McPherson and Concordia, as the law asked us to do. And that's where we are, you know? And I want to get something clear, because it's really not clear to me. I heard the discussion about shall and may. Did we change that to may? I mean, I don't think so. I think shall is still the word that's in there, you know?
That was my understanding-
Yes.
-from the comments.
Yes. Now, what happens in the bylaws? Because that's one of the things that has to take place, that Coalition Board and the State Board are supposed to work to put this together, and the, cast the E, to put this together in a way that, that makes it work. But the rules, regulations, and organization.
And Mark has a comment.
Madam Chair, I'm not going to address that point, because that's, I think that's, you know how, you know my recommendation on, on that word, but just from a matter of procedure, and I know you wanted to handle the debate on this first, but as it relates to people's questions or what you do next, you are required by statute to approve or deny the applications, and this would be the last board meeting before the time period expires. So procedurally, I think what was at least suggested or contemplated, if it's the will of the board, is that you, whatever language you finally agree upon in these guidelines, that that be written into the order for each of the separate innovative school districts, so that there's a linkage, if you will, between the approval process and the guidelines that are being proposed or talked about being written in the future. So while Jim's comment is, is that there are more steps to come, that would be something that the Coalition Board with the board's representatives would be charged with, but this would be the official, either approval or denial, of the application. So I think it is important to have a full debate and decide, you know, exactly what language you want to be in the order, so that the, then the order would be part of the approval of each of the specific application.
And Mark, this would be inserted into the order?
If that, it's my recommendation that when you do take that up for consideration, that that, whatever language you finally agree on, be placed in the order so that there, so that it's clear-
Clear.
-that those guidelines would be-
The basis of our approval is here.
Correct. So there's a linkage. There's an expectation that if it's approved, it's approved because these guidelines were-
Included.
Included. And, and I've got the draft language up, and as soon as we get to some, you know, consensus, then that would be finalized, and then that would be part of the order for the, for the action item.
Thank you.
So you need to know at this point what the consensus is as to the language, or are we?
I mean, technically, I think you, it, it can come up at the time that the motion is made. It could still be in a state of flux. I'm just trying to anticipate it, so I have the language ready and the order, but-
John Bacon?
I had one other quick question. As far as the bylaws that you're working on next, I guess, the, the law says that there, these members to this Coalition Board are going to be designated by the, the local Board of Education from the innovative district. Are we going to set terms? Because could they designate one person to be on the board one month, and then the next meeting you got another person there?
Great question.
Will that be part of the bylaws?
I haven't talked about that. I would anticipate that that would be part of the bylaws.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It's not a life sentence.
But I was going to suggest that you specify a term for the, the board members, so-
Sure. Well, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion.
Well, before you do-
Okay.
I had wording for a motion.
Okay. Your wording's probably better than my-
Well, and then you, you could add to it or amend it, because of the necessity for us to issue an order authorizing this. And so here was the motion that I had, and if you want to add or change it-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Move to approve the recommendations and incorporate the guidelines into the order granting authority to operate as a public innovative school district. We would need a motion, first of all, for McPherson, and then a second motion for Concordia. So, does that-
I would like to hear one more time if I would respect that.
The motion would be to move to approve these recommendations and incorporate the guidelines that we've just seen into the order granting the authority to operate as a public innovative school district. And that was the charge, I believe, that was given to us in the statute.
I would, I would so move.
For which district? Because we're going to do them separately.
McPherson, USD 418.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion seconded by Kathy Bush? Is there discussion? Janet Watt?
Okay. Back to this thing, I want to ask the question again on number four. Does this mean, I know what it means, but does this mean that any district that comes to us from the committee, the board will actually take a vote, and we have no authority to vote against it? Because it says we have to do it. So I mean, would there be any reason for us to vote if it just came from that committee? Would it just be, say, this is-
You certainly have the right not to vote for it.
So if you, so if I felt that it was appropriate-
Sure.
I still retain that right? What if the majority agreed with me?
Then they agree with you.
But they would still be granted the permission? The order six-
Not from us.
I said, secondly-
Brad?
Okay, I, I, go ahead, Brad.
Well, the statute says it still has to come to you, but if there's a reason why, and again, this is just interpretation, it still has to ultimately come to the board. And if the board majority voted no, then it says, as a board, you need to then explain back to them why it is, because the innovative coalition may have themselves interpreted something wrong. So if, if the board votes no, we have, the board as a whole then has to give a reason back to the Coalition Board as to why you voted no, because they may have interpreted something wrong. But then it's that back and forth. Then they could resubmit.
I just had a real problem in telling me I had to vote a certain way. I mean, you know, because I'll just abstain. If I hear them tell me I have to vote for it, I may love it. I'll abstain. I won't vote, maybe not against it, but I have a real problem with that.
I will never tell you how to vote.
Thank you. Secondly, this motion that was just made by Steve, I'll speak to that one now. Does that include the waivers from everything that they've applied for, or does this just mean that we're putting them on the innovative, we're approving them as an innovative district? Or does that approve, does that include approving their application, which I can't recall what other things they requested waivers from? So I guess I'd want to see those again or hear what they were.
Well, if you will look at what the guidelines say, it is recommended that the State Board of Education take action to approve the first two districts. That's what it says.
Approve the district, but does that include approving the things that they requested waivers for?
It would.
I was thinking, maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking incorrectly.
Wouldn't it?
There were some waivers for some licensure issues, weren't there?
Well-
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm, help me, I mean, maybe I'm incorrect. I, I was thinking there were, yeah, licensure, yeah.
I, I suppose it would. We are looking for a way to collaborate and move forward through a difficult issue that has so many pieces and parts that it's hard to have an agreement with every part of it, but we're looking for a compromise and a way to move forward. So maybe someone has a better answer to that question.
I think that would have to be addressed in the order, because, for example, McPherson's, right now, the, the only specific thing has to do with state assessments, which regardless of what we would do as a state, they would still need permission. So that is not something that we could waive. So my interpretation from that meeting was, we're approving these two school districts to move forward as innovative districts, and then we will work with them specifically on their specific requests in the order, because even-
Okay.
Even Concordia had some things we couldn't. They had some we could.
John showed me some that we couldn't approve, so, okay, then, I, I can support that then. I, I like that. Thank you.
That was the working premise that I had, Brad, at, at the meeting. Randy, did, you're on the same page? I mean, we talked about that a couple of times.
And my, and myself as well. It's, and in fact, obviously, that part would fall under number nine for McPherson.
Well, again, we don't want to-
So, so it's not that we're approving the waiver itself. We'd have to work with them to get that waiver. And Mark Ferguson?
The way we currently have the order written, though, is simply it's an approval without exceptions, without this, this, I mean, you, you may have worked out a practical, step-by-step what you plan to do, but right now, unless you have something in the order that says that you're going to come back and address those specifics, it's just the general guidelines. So to your question, Janet, I'm, at least the way the draft order is written now, or what I've been directed to put together, it doesn't, it doesn't spell that out. So I can't guarantee you that, that, that the way it's, if, if the motion were to pass, that that would be guaranteed, that it would come back, you know, to the agency for that work. Now, if that's the general understanding of everyone that's, that was at the meeting, and that's what the Coalition Board intends, then that's fine, but that's outside the scope of the, the specific language of the order. Does that make sense?
Okay, then I guess I would, I'd like to amend the motion. I will amend the motion to do whatever he said we should do. Did I word that correctly? Thank you.
To do what? You would like to amend the- You would like to amend the emotion, the motion, the motion to include the statement that McPherson would work with the department on the waiver for the assessment? Is that what we're talking about? No?
Brad, can you or Mark give us wording on this? Of what I've said?
I guess where I'm going, is I'm reflecting back. Last month, we had a specific, just a draft. It wasn't meant to be conclusory, but, for example, the second item of the specific application, McPherson was, McPherson, USD 418, was granted permission to use assessments other than the state assessments in grade eight and high school by U.S. Department of Education for the past three years. And Brad, you can probably elaborate on that. But it was the conclusory statement in addressing that specific item of the application that neither the State Board nor the State Department of Education has the authority to grant exemptions from federal regulations. My point is, unless you're going to address this issue in the order, I think you provide, at least the way it's currently proposed, you're providing a blanket authorization. And according to the language where it says, upon request, if it's within your authority, you shall grant that exemption, I don't believe that you're retaining the discretion to evaluate that and give a thumbs up or thumbs down on that. So the application, the order on each application, doesn't address the specific portions of the application that have been submitted to the board. It's just a blanket authority. If that's what you want to do, that's fine, but I don't think that, I just want to make sure you're clear, because your question is, is it expected that you'd come back to either to the board or to the Coalition Board with your representation to work through that?
I would say, and Randy, you can jump in here, too, that when we met, we weren't meeting to approve or not approve the innovations that they have proposed, but rather the establishment of the Coalition Board to move forward.
And the issue is that by statute, this board is required to approve or disapprove of the applications as submitted, and this is the last date upon which you have a regular meeting. Before that, 90 days expires. So if you're approving the application as submitted.
No, that's not what I'm approving.
Okay.
So could we not include the statement, something to the effect that McPherson would work with the department to seek a waiver? Randy, what?
I think, the way I interpreted the law from the beginning, is that the State Board needed to approve or deny the application based upon the standards that were written. I think there was maybe a little disagreement there. And then, what really was the concern is that, once you did that, you'd opened up the floodgates. I think now, the compromise was, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would approve the application based on the merits of the application as defined by law, and then everything then going forward would be a joint collaboration in moving forward based upon the guidelines. And number nine says, McPherson's not going to go forward.
It's number eight.
Number eight, I'm sorry, and not do state assessments until there's a collaboration with the federal government to do it or not, because you don't have authority to waive that. So I don't know if that helps.
But that's what I said.
But it's already in the guidelines. It's in the guidelines as presented. I would suggest the recommendation should be that the board approves McPherson to be an Innovative District subject to the proposed guidelines.
Yes.
And in the order, the order lays it all out and says, McPherson is approved according, and then we embed the guidelines. And then I agree, or my interpretation from the whole meeting, now, McPherson, Concordia, the board, the Innovative Board, then works forward as to what in there does Concordia, that we're not approving Concordia to do this, this, or this. We're approving them to be one of the first two Innovatives, subject to these guidelines, and now we move forward.
And that's exactly what the motion said. Well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I mean, it said, incorporate the guidelines into the order granting the authority to operate as a public innovative school district, so.
But, Madam Chair, where we got off track, though, I think, is that a specific question was asked, is that, does that mean that they're going to come back to the board for that? And my point is, if it's not in the order, and you all, and they all have worked it out, that's fine, but it's not, there's no way to compel that, because it's not in the order. So, I mean, I'm just trying to draw a distinction between the clarity of the order.
And that was a point well taken, Mark, and you were answering a specific question. If we all feel confident that the motion was thorough enough to address this issue, we could go ahead and vote. If not, there can be further discussion.
I would just like to read it again.
The motion?
Yes.
Move to approve the recommendations and incorporate the recommendations of the committee and incorporate guidelines into the order granting authority to operate as a public innovative school district to McPherson. I kind of, so that was Peggy, I should have had Peggy read it.
Well, I'm just wondering if we could make it specific for each district. It wouldn't say, move to approve the recommendation for McPherson, USD 418, and incorporate the guidelines into the order granting authority to operate as a public innovative district. To put their names specifically in the front, is that?
Yes. And who made that motion? Who do you have to make the motion?
Steve Roberts made the motion, and. Kathy seconded it.
Kathy seconded.
Janet Waugh had moved to amend, but we never had a second on that.
It says, we're approving the application while including the guidelines? Is that what we're doing?
The recommendation, which is the application, right?
Assorting the guidelines.
And incorporating the guidelines into the order granting authority to operate as a public innovative district.
So the guidelines would supersede the application?
I believe you will have approved the application the way that, the way the motion is read, and you will have approved the application as is. But you have heard comments from those that have participated in the discussion, that it is the intent of the Coalition Board to work with the agency and with the board to make sure that any waivers that can be granted will be sought, and that there'll be continued collaboration after the approval of the Innovative District application.
We are not approving, I wouldn't approve, you know, waiving, the waivers. What I'm doing is, quite frankly, is what Randy just said, approving the Coalition Board members, and then working with them on the innovation recommendations that they have in their application, that they would like to move forward on. One level, those items that we can, by statute, do, which Brad has given us examples, we could go with right away. Some of them take other entities, whether, I'd say, Activities Association, or federal government, or whatever, because many of the recommendations that are in their applications aren't so much, they're kind of like visions of what they want to do, rather than specifics of what they want to do. You know, and our job is to help them, and then they'll bring it back, and we'll approve those.
And you've done a good job of moving forward with the charge you were given, to help us move forward on this issue. But the reality of it is, we must approve or deny the applications at this meeting in order to meet the timeframe. And although your charge wasn't specifically about the applications, that's a part of what needs to be done today.
Yes, I understand.
Can I maybe, what I believe the law says, and again, this may be a disagreement, is that we had to follow certain very specific requirements in the law, and then you were either approved or not approved. Once the board is established, or the first district or the first two, there's nothing in the law that says how they're going to operate, other than it leaves it open. We're saying, we're coming to you now with some parameters, and those are the guidelines which will become bylaws, and all that will be approved by you. So I don't see that what you're approving is every little thing in our application. It's establishing the board, of which then, from that point on, we have some guidelines and eventually bylaws that will determine how we operate. Now, that, again, may be a different interpretation than Mark has, but that's always the way that I saw this operating from the time that we worked it out.
Thank you. Did you, Mark has the order in a suggestion.
Madam Chair, I have a draft copy of the order, and if it pleases the board, I could hand that out. You could take a five-minute break, read it, because it's such an important issue. That way, you could have a chance to read the actual order and the language, and make sure you're comfortable with it, and then vote if that would be your pleasure.
I think that's a good suggestion. So we can reconvene at 3:00. Mark's going to give you the copy of the order now, and then we'll vote when we convene again.
Madam Chair, point of order, do we typically take a break when there's a motion on the table?
I don't know there's anything typical about this situation, so.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
We're not taking a break.
We're just reading.
Silent reading.
It's 3:00, so we will go ahead with the issue before us. We have a motion on the floor. You've all had a chance to look at the order. It's pretty clear-cut in what it says. Are there any other questions or discussion before we vote on the motion?
I'd like to say something.
Janet Waugh.
From what I can see, if I'll make sure I got to have this clear, because I'm the most confused one sitting here, obviously. But according to this, the fourth whereupon, it says, the application was approved, but that meant it was approved by the governor and the chairperson of the House and Senate Ed Committees. It says, then they're required to seek authority from the board to operate as an Innovative District. And it says, they gave us the, they submitted for review their application, and then we review it and consider whether or not to grant authority to operate as a public innovative district. So basically, to me, the way I'm reading this is, we're simply saying they can become a public innovative district. Am I correct? We're not?
That's what the motion says.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm tired.
Yeah. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. I see 10 hands, so it's unanimous. Now, we will need a motion for Concordia, and the motion would read, move to approve the recommendations and incorporate guidelines into the order granting the authority to USD 333 Concordia to operate as a public innovative school district. Moved by Deana Horst, seconded by Ken Willard. Is there discussion on this motion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so we have a 10-0 vote on that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy, for being here.
I would say this, the next meeting is going to be June 30th in Salina.
Yes. And Madam Chair, thank you. And I know that you slipped me a note, said, would you stop coming to our meetings so other people can get up and tell me a joke?
You know that's not true.
No, it's not true. I'm joking. I'm joking. Thank you, Randy.
And I do want to, again, thank Jim and Deana for helping us work through this issue. Your leadership and your skills at working with others have been a definite asset in this situation, so thank you.
We just did.
Well, yeah, we didn't. A break. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing board members asking for a five-minute break. Can you chill for five minutes?
We serve it the pleasure, absolutely.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Scott Myers and Susan Helbert regarding licensure fees.
Opportunity to be before you again, we gave you a receive item last month on licensure fees. As you're aware, each year, the board needs to set license fees for teachers. So we are back today with the formal recommendation.
And I want to review the information that you received last month very quickly. Again, statutory requirement for you to establish the fees, and this is where those fees go towards, to fund licensure operations, and then rat back in professional practices. History of fees, we talked about this a little bit last time. In 2011, that's when we created a tiered fee system, which basically said, we're going to take a base amount, $39, and then add $3 for every year that that license is valid, because rat-back enrollment is $3 every year. And then that became a little bit complicated for applicants and for our office, because there were too many fee groups. So last year, we simplified that by collapsing those down. We didn't really create a fee increase last year. So then this year, last year, we gave you, last month, we gave you examples of what a $12 and a $15 fee increase would look like, and you asked us to round those off. So we're still recommending the $15 increases and across-the-board fee amount, and this chart would show the effects of that. So currently, across the top, you see initials 45, professional, renewal, and so forth. The $15 increase rounded would be 60, and then 70. And then, if you want to compare that to the $12, you see those rounded figures also. And then we gave you a handout, the one that looks like this. This is all the types of licenses that we currently issue, and this is the column, this is the current fee, and then what that fee would look like. This is the fees using the $15 rounded increase. So are there questions?
John Bacon.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how does this compare to page 44 in our material? There's a few differences. The 80's changed to 85, and the 12 is now 15. From this handout we just received, what is this compared to what was in our material?
It should be the same.
It's not.
Okay.
On page 44.
43 is.
That was probably the noun.
The accomplished is 85 on this handout we just received. It was 80 in our material. And at the top, it said a $12 increase in our material, and this shows.
There should be another page. Your materials, you had both the $12 and the $15 sheet like this. And because now we're recommending 15, we're using that one as a handout?
In your materials, you have one that mirrors this at 15, but you also had one at 12.
I got you. I got you. All right.
Okay.
Yes, I'm with you now. Thanks.
Kath, John, was your question answered? Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, and I would assume this would be primarily for the renewal, although it might be for professional. How long a period of time is that license for?
Five years.
Is there a magical thing, five years?
Is there a magical thing, five years?
No, that's the current regulation. The professional license renewal is maintained in five-year increments.
And, you know, I don't know that I want to open that can of worms right now, but I personally don't see anything wrong with in the future, looking at a longer period as far as, because you do bring these back annually? The fees annually?
You have to, you look at these fees every year.
And again, I don't know that I want to open that can of worms right now, but I don't know that I see anything wrong with a longer license than five years when you get, not obviously for the initial, but when you get into that renewal piece. I know you'd have to add the $3 for the rat-back each year, so you'd have to do that, but I don't know that I see anything wrong with a longer time as far as a renewal. Certainly seemed like when I was getting my license renewal, every time I turned around, it came up again. I know it wasn't, it was five years, but still, that time goes pretty quick when you're in a building. And again, I'm not proposing that for this year, but I'm thinking in the future, I don't know how the rest of the board thinks, but that's a, I'm sure some states do that differently. It might be interesting to see what some folks do, compared to what we do, and think about that maybe for a future, something in the future. Some other people may have other thoughts, but just an idea.
Are there other questions or comments? Then, do I hear a motion to approve the licensure fees based on the $15 increase? Moved by Carolyn Campbell. Is there a second? Seconded by Steve Roberts. Other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's a 10-0 vote. Thank you very much. And Kathy Gosa is with us to review Senate Bill 367 on data security.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you about Senate Bill 367, also known as Kansas Student Data Privacy Act. Hey, it works. I know you all received a document in your packet, which kind of describes the act a bit, and so what I'm going to focus on this afternoon is really what's in the legislation, kind of high-level, definitely not getting into the details. I'm not a lawyer, I enact these things, I'm operational, so that's really my focus. And then, talk a little bit about how the Student Data Privacy Act relates to FERPA, which is currently, are the regulations or the laws that we use for student data privacy, and then some of the impacts that we see on our current practices. And I would caution you to know that, I believe, as we, as time goes by, we're going to probably see additional impacts, but this is what we see right now. So first of all, the legislation includes some restrictions for disclosing student data. And specifically, the restrictions apply to education entities, both school districts and Department of Education. The restrictions apply only to student data submitted to and maintained in the kid's system, okay, or the statewide longitudinal data system. So, other data that the school might collect is not talked about in this legislation, however, that other data is still governed by FERPA. The legislation also requires annual written notice to parents that student data may be disclosed per this section, and requires districts to maintain a file of signed notices. And as I'll talk in a minute, that's probably one of the larger pieces of this that will end up being, I believe, a burden on school districts. So, that's kind of the overview of some restrictions. It also allows disclosure of student data in certain cases. So, the legislation says that when an adult student or a student's parent, if the student isn't an adult, has a written consent, then the data can be disclosed. So, if someone's doing a study in a school, and they get all the kids to, or the parents to sign a written consent, then that data can be used per those, per that written consent. Disclosure is also allowed to the student and the student's parents, however, so if the parents come and ask us for data, we have to, of course, make sure that that is a parent or a legal guardian, but once we've done that, we can disclose data, however, only if that data pertains only to that student. We couldn't disclose a lot of students' data, it would have to be just that student's data. It allows us to disclose student data to authorized personnel of school districts, the Department of Education, and the Board of Regents, who require the data to perform assigned tasks or assigned duties. It also allows us to disclose student data to authorized personnel of any state agency or to service providers, in other words, contractors, is how we read that, that work for the state agency or school districts. But that is if they are engaged to perform a function of instruction, assessment, or longitudinal reporting, and this is where, for example, C E T E would fall in. So, they'd be a service provider, a contractor to the Department of Education, to perform a function of assessment. And so, we'd be allowed under this to provide data to them. However, this would require a data sharing agreement, which is the case today as well. We're allowed to disclose student data to post-secondary institutions whenever there is written consent, and in the cases where we need to comply with subpoenas or court orders, that direct disclosure, we can disclose that, and to public health officials in compliance with certain health statutes. So those are the cases it talks about where we can disclose student data. Aggregate data, however, can be disclosed to other government entities or to audit and evaluation and research organizations. And I'll remind you that aggregate data means grouped data, cohorts, institution-level data, et cetera, that doesn't contain personally identifiable data. And we'll talk about PII here in just a minute. And so, it also allows disclosure of student directory information to vendors, such as yearbook, class ring vendors, et cetera, and it doesn't require parental consent for that. So, schools could give, and it's not really just schools, we could actually give student data to yearbook vendors or class ring vendors, and it actually specifies some of those. And also, as deemed necessary by the education agency, as long as there is written consent, and that's basically an opt-in. So, directory information, which is defined specifically, slightly differently than FERPA, can be disclosed in those cases. Now, the legislation all goes into collection of student data. And so, it talks a little bit about some restrictions on collecting student data, and specifies that schools must have written consent if they have any desire to collect biometric data, or to use any device or mechanism to assess student physiological or emotional state, or to administer any test, survey, or exam containing questions about the student's or family's personal beliefs or practices regarding sex, family life, morality, or religion. And you may recall that those were big conversation pieces during this whole legislative session, and so, it's very specifically noted in there that only with consent can any of that data be collected. However, based upon, as the legislation progressed, there were concerns talked about, in that in some cases in schools, you know, there needs to be, a child may seem to be having issues, or be ill, or whatever, and there may be questions that need to be asked in order to kind of dig into that. And so, they added a section that allows school counselors to provide counseling services to students, and those counseling services can include tests, which are part of the counseling services. However, any data collected through those tests by the school counselor has to be stored on district-owned devices, so they can't put them on their home devices or whatever. Now, just an issue that's currently being discussed and thought about regarding this is, does the Student Data Privacy Act preclude threat assessment or investigation into child abuse in the home? Because if there is child abuse going on, we know that teachers are required to report that and ask questions and then find out about it. However, this really precludes anyone other than the school counselor doing that. So that is a point of contention there, and something that's being discussed, and I believe a concern that a lot of schools have. Some other things that are in the legislation is that it grants some enforcement authority to the attorney, the state attorney general, and to the district attorneys. It also requires notification to affected parties of unauthorized disclosure or breaches. So, and that's no different than the practices that are in place today. It requires written reports submitted to the governor and legislator by May 15th of each year regarding specific things, and this starts May 15th of 2015. So, that written report will need to include categories of student data collected for the state longitudinal data system, changes to student data collections and to federal reporting requirements, exceptions made regarding student data release, and scope and nature of security audits completed. And so, it's kind of interesting, the exceptions part, when Cheryl Whelan and I were talking about this, we're not really allowed to make exceptions, so we're not sure, I guess if we did make some, for some reason, we'd need to include that in our report, so. And then it also requires K S D to annually publish on our agency website homepage a report of categories of data collected in the S L D S. And we believe that the student data collection fact sheet that we created a few months ago, and have referred to in here before, is, covers that requirement, and so that's already been posted. So, we meet that requirement even now, and then as that gets updated, we believe that we'll meet that requirement to post and publish the categories of data we collect. It also requires Kansas Education Boards, and that would include the Board of Regents, the, you all, the Board of Education, and local school boards, to adopt a policy in accordance with the Student Data Privacy Act in addition to applicable federal and state regulations. So, I'm not sure if that means you have to formally adopt something, but that particular statement is actually in the legislation as well. So, how does all of this, how does the Student Data Privacy Act relate to FERPA? Because I said, we've already, we've been acting under FERPA for, ever since we've had individual student data, and so, we need to examine this and say, what does this mean, and how do the two either work together, or where do we see discrepancies? So at this point, one thing we know is that redis closure of student data and data management practices have to abide both by FERPA and by the Student Data Privacy Act, the Kansas Student Data Privacy Act. So, we have to, you know, if there's two different guidelines, we're going to have to do the most restrictive. However, in several cases, we've noted that the Student Data Privacy Act does not necessarily align with FERPA, and in all of those, it is actually more restrictive. For example, the Student Data Privacy Act definition of directory information is more restrictive than FERPA's. And also, FERPA basically says that directory information is personally identifiable information that is generally not considered harmful or invasive, or invasion of privacy if disclosed. Schools can, and allow schools to adopt directory information policies to allow for disclosure of directory information for specific purposes or to specific parties. So it's kind of, it says, it's in PII, that really wouldn't bother anybody if it was out there anyway, and allows school boards to basically kind of say, here's our policies around what we're going to call directory information and how we're going to handle it. But the Student Data Privacy Act is a lot more specific. It specifies that directory information is the student's name, address, phone information, their participation in officially recognized activities and sports, their weight and height, if the student is a member of an athletic team, and degrees, honors, or awards received. And it does not allow school boards to redefine that. The Student Data Privacy Act definition of personally identifiable student data is also more restrictive than FERPA's. For example, in FERPA, PII is defined as the name, mother's maiden name, address, date of birth, social security number, parent's name, or other data that alone or in combination is linked or linkable to a specific student that would allow a reasonable person in the school community who does not have personal knowledge of the relevant circumstances to identify the student with reasonable certainty. Okay, so, kind of got the gist of that. There's some specific things, and then there's a situation where I can take that, and I can, if I'm a reasonable person in the school community, I could figure out who it is. However, Student Data Privacy Act does not have specific elements. It says that PII is student data that alone or in combination is linked or linkable to a specific student, and would allow a reasonable person to identify the student with reasonable certainty. So it doesn't talk about the reasonable person being in the community or being part of the circumstances, and again, it doesn't have specific elements. The data sharing agreements are requirements, the requirements for data sharing agreements pretty much are the same, they're not too different. Some exceptions are that the Student Data Privacy Act specifies standards for data destruction, and I'm personally never a fan of that, because technology changes so frequently that if you specify a standard, that standard may or may not be adequate over time. However, they did specify the National Institute of Standards, the NIST standards, and they are pretty good at keeping those up to date, so I don't really see that's going to be a major issue. And another difference is that FERPA requires a compliance audit, so that we're required to audit to determine if the parties we're working with and have agreements with are abiding by the regulations or by the agreement terms, and Student Data Privacy Act does not have that compliance audit requirement. Student Data Privacy Act requires an opt-in to disclose directory information. FERPA is an opt-out. And Student Data Privacy Act does not include exceptions for disclosure to law enforcement, FERPA does. And the Student Data Privacy Act includes significantly greater enforcement capabilities than FERPA does, and this is probably one of the bigger concerns or bigger pieces of it, other than the burden it puts on schools. In FERPA, the Family Compliance Office investigates complaints and may bring action against any entity that receives Department of Education funds and can withhold those funds or cause that organization to face a five-year debarment. So that's the ramification of not following FERPA. Student Data Privacy Act actually states that the attorney general or any district attorney may bring action and seek injunctive relief to education agency, the employee, or other entity in possession of student data. So that sounds a little scarier, if you ask me. The Student Data Privacy Act also does not require a data sharing agreement with the Board of Regents, you may have noted that, however, FERPA does, so we will still need to have that in place, and we expect to. So, what are the impacts on our current practices? The ones we know of right now are that we need, we have to look through all of our data sharing agreement templates and make sure that everything in there includes the restrictions and the allowances of both FERPA and the Student Data Privacy Act. We also know that any requests that we look at from researchers and other non-agency entities cannot include any student-level data, that's very specific in there. We're not able to share with researchers. We can share with vendors, so if we hire somebody to do a study for us, then they would be a vendor acting on our behalf. However, if it's a researcher coming to us, then we're not allowed to provide student-level data. Our practices for handling security breaches and for transparency around data collection already align well with the Student Data Privacy Act, so we have no impact there that we know of. And our school districts are required to provide annual written notice that student data may be disclosed, obtain parent signatures, and maintain documents on file. So if you think about what that means, is every child, they're going to have to, give them a notice, and then manage getting a signature back from the parent, and then maintain those parent signatures on file. Cheryl Whelan is working with the Kansas Association of School Board Lawyers to create a form that all schools can use to make that a little bit easier for them, but it's still, I think, going to be a significant amount of work on their part. And school districts also must obtain written consent from parents to opt-in for release of directory information. Currently, if your child is on a sports team or whatever, then only if the parent says, "No, don't put my child's name on the roster or on..." no, don't put my child's name on the roster or on the graduation roster or something like that, would the school have to worry about it. So they'd have to track that. Now, in order to put the child's name on the football roster or on the graduation announcement, they'll have to have a signature from the parent. So there will be some changes to the practices and to what, what we need to do, but, you know, we think we've got the gist and the main part of those. And any questions? Yes, sir.
Kathy, what will be the impact on the practice of publishing on sports programs, the height and weight of players?
Well, it's, it specifically notes that height and weight, if you're in a sports program, is called directory information, and that they're allowed to publish that with parent consent. So basically, they, they can publish that information as long as they have a signature of the parent saying they can. Today, they don't, aren't required to have that signature.
Really?
But they will have to in the future.
Okay.
Yes. Jim?
Thank you.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you are exactly right. It will have a huge impact on the districts as far as retaining this permission.
Exactly.
And with enrollment, believe it or not, just around the corner, I assume that information's getting out to schools because they're already putting their enrollment packets together. They're all, already doing all of that.
Right. Lots, yeah, absolutely. And I know the Kansas Association School, of School Boards is working on that, and I've seen a number of emails and communications that have gone out from them to schools regarding this. But I would agree that it really needs to be something that is brought to their attention because I, I think it, if they don't pay attention, it could be a big surprise to a lot of schools. And anything that can be done to help, because they'll have the same requirement. So if they can come up with a common form or a common process, I think that can only be useful, so. I agree.
There used to be, and I don't know if it's still around, but Kansas Communities that Cares survey, anybody? And they would ask a lot of those kinds of questions that are now restricted. So I don't even know if that survey's around anymore.
There's a number of surveys, I think, that will, they'll have to.
Will have impact.
And I think they're either going to have to get consent, which might be one way of doing it.
Well, and that'll skew, then skew your data.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Kathy, it's interesting that you mentioned that because I just attended a meeting last week, and that survey was discussed, and they were showing how their participation rate had declined so drastically in the past few years. And I bet that's the reason.
Well, and then, as, because that provides data for grants that the state then goes after, so then there's decreased amount of money that's available for grant opportunities to provide services. So, you know, there's some implications there also. Okay? Well, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you so much. This is a very important issue that we needed to know more about.
Thank you.
And next, Lynn Bechtel is going to introduce our presenter.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to once again be able to introduce you to Dr. Stephanie Hirsch, who is the Executive Director of Learning Forward. And she was here in April. You'll probably remember that we unfortunately had to squeeze her in the middle of someone else's presentation because she had to rush off to catch a plane, but that's not the case today. So we appreciate, though, her, her making herself available. She's in Kansas today and tomorrow, meeting with lots of different stakeholder groups and professional organizations in Kansas. So, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me back. So at least it indicates to me that there was enough interest in what I had to share, that you were open to a longer conversation. When I rushed out of Kansas last time, I'm not sure if I shared with you that I was actually going to the Department of Ed to facilitate professional learning for OESC, all of the staffers in that department, so they could begin to think about how they could position their requirements in states to really, to support higher-quality professional learning for educators. So that was a really exciting and interesting opportunity that appears that I'll continue to be working with them over the next several years as they change some of their rules and requirements. So last time I was here, I had about 15 minutes to talk at you. This time, I've been given 30 minutes. So as a passionate professional learner, I am not going to use my 30 minutes to talk at you. Actually, we're going to engage in some professional learning. So I want you to have the opportunity to experience what we want for all educators in Kansas. And so that will include us watching a video, talking about the video, and you all engaging in a quiz to assess, where are you as policymakers in your role in supporting quality professional learning for educators in Kansas? So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to engage you in some professional learning. So we will look at professional development in action. And while you're watching this, I'm only going to show you about four and a half minutes of this video, but while you're watching it, I ask you to think about these two questions. What are you observing about teacher learning in the video? And how can what you are observing influence how you think about investing in professional learning? So we're going to hope this works. Last time, I think I struggled with... Okay, where's this?
School math team engaged in team-based professional learning. And what they were doing was beginning with data about student achievement by looking at work that their students had actually produced.
One of the things we found last year that killed them was they couldn't go from word problems to the equations. So we worked on it this year.
And teachers were able to identify particular areas where their students were not performing at the rate that they wanted them to, and they were able to target specific strategies that they would try in their classrooms to address those.
And then they wrote the equation. And then we had several equations for them to choose from, and they had to match them up. So it was self-checking at the end. If they had used one equation more than once, they knew they made a mistake. Or if they had one left, they knew it fit in there somewhere. So that really helped them just to understand how to write it.
The way teachers can quantify the success of this kind of professional learning is by looking at, directly at their students' work, at assessments they are designing for their students in the classroom, looking collectively at work their students are doing from classroom to classroom to classroom, and ultimately by looking at how their students perform on these specific areas of the state assessment. So they have multiple ways of looking at their success. Immediate, a little more long-term, and then the big assessment.
Marie, you had that from seventh grade, and that definitely helps them. And then for eighth grade, they're still continuously doing that, so that's another good plus with them. However, some of the things that I saw in some of my students' work that I think they still need, that they're still struggling with, is that when they, this student here, the equation is horizontal, and then they'll start setting it up vertically and then sort of get lost in what it is that they need to do. And so for that, I think with the rectangle boxes that you had, Katie, that'll kind of help them to structure their problems by knowing to stay horizontal with it as opposed to going vertically with it.
This kind of professional learning is the kind of professional learning that is team-based at school, focused specifically on the learning students are engaged in, directly tied to the student's content standards. It is driven by the teachers themselves. There's expertise on this team, and that shared expertise and collective responsibility is going to help all of the teachers in this school be successful. Because together, they will all be implementing the same high-quality instruction because they're sharing their expertise across classrooms, rather than being isolated in their individual classrooms with their individual materials and instructional resources.
But then they're losing the point of, the reason you have to divide or multiply by the coefficient that's times that variable, is because they need to get one times that variable. Because once you have one times the variable, then you have what Marie says, you get that one W or whatever that variable is, and they're switching their signs. They think they still need to keep using an opposite sign.
Now, when we initially started working with the two-step equations from with the one-step, did you guys continue with the algebra tiles, as far as modeling with the algebra tiles, or?
I did for my strategies class, and that really helped. I modeled with the one-step. And then the day before, I taught the two-steps, I modeled with them the two-step equations and helped them to understand why they divide.
All right. Would you mind coming up, Katie, to model that for us? And then maybe Katie could probably come into some of our other classes, you know, as co-teaching to kind of show you exactly what it is that we're doing. Because I think the, the war tools that we get in kids in their two-boxes, as far as different methods, that just helps them overall to be able to pull from one of those resources. So is that okay? All right.
There is a good deal of research to support that teacher collaboration improves both their teaching as well as their students' learning. For perhaps 15 or 20 years, we have been looking at what happens in schools when teachers work together. One of the studies, the Newman and Wayledge study, that looked at how schools are involved in reform efforts, discovered that when teachers collaborate about curriculum and instruction, that not only were teachers more engaged and excited about their work, but students benefited as well.
You have a buddy and they're $4. How much do you each get? So we make it real live. And then they understand that they need to divide it up, and everyone gets two. So once they understand division, that they're doing that for a reason, it helps them to understand the process.
So for this coming week, Katie, we could probably go in on some of our conference periods, and if you want Katie to work with you a little closer, we could do that. If you want Katie to come in and co-teach on one of your periods, we could probably work out someone to cover the classes. I have a period that I can give up my conference period to go in on one of the last ones.
They are eager to go into one another's classroom and observe to see how teachers are using these strategies with students.
Okay, so it goes on for another five minutes, and I'll leave it there at the suspense moment, and maybe you'll want to access the end and see what they learned by the end of the process. But for the moment, would you all turn to one person next to you and see if you can answer those two questions? What did you observe about teacher learning, and how might this influence actions you might take in your role as a state board member? And you'll notice I chose a math lesson in particular because I know we had some CPAs on the state board. And I'm married to a CPA, so I know what kind of thing gets them going.
The collaboration.
So turn to somebody, and you have 60 seconds.
Team teaching, the collaboration, the...
Self-reflection, too, I thought was important because it's forcing teachers to think through what they were doing as they, as much as demonstrated.
And then, there was no one else in the room. It's teacher threat. I mean, that is, you know, one thing I always learned is, if you have a group of teachers, get them together and get out. And that's, so from policy or whatever, I think it's trying to encourage best.
I hope you all aren't arguing about the math, and I hope you're focusing on the learning.
And for teachers that come to collaborate within the resource.
I know, but I don't know how to do that because I'm not.
The state board has kind of like professional learning.
Just accept.
The state, they can close off, we can get that, or they want to get this. You know, one thing is that we've got to be able to send messages out better.
Okay, about 10 more seconds.
Which reminded me of something.
Would anybody be willing, excuse me? Thank you. Okay, so I must admit, you are the first state board that I've asked to do that. I do want to compliment you all on honoring my request because I didn't know what I was going to do if you all looked at me with blank stares when I asked you to have that conversation. But I always expect great things from Kansas because Kansas is always ahead of things. And so I appreciate you, and I know that you care deeply about your role and what you can do to advance educator effectiveness and results for students. So tell me what you see is, do I have a couple of brave volunteers to comment on the video and its relationship to your role as state board members? Do I call, or do you call? Jenny, you call.
I saw two things, teachers of learners and teachers of risk.
Great. Yeah. I love that second one. Thank you.
The importance of collaboration and the fact that what they were doing was based on student learning, they were focused on, on learning and what their students were doing.
Absolutely, to help their students. Other things that y'all saw?
I think it was, from our point of view, it's encouraging teachers to get out of their classroom and talk with each other and learn from one another.
Isn't that inspiring, watching that? Yes?
I think it was relevance.
Relevant to their immediate job. Absolutely. Y'all are identifying all the elements of great professional learning. So when somebody says to you the phrase professional development or professional learning, if you were closing your eyes and you were imagining it, maybe before you watched that video, it might more, what you envisioned might look like an adult pullout program. It might be you think of, or other people think of, teachers leaving the school and going somewhere to learn from some expert. And as Joellen Killian said in the video, the real expertise resides within that group. They're there to help each other so that all of their students are successful. And when I was here last time, I spent a lot of time talking about these key ideas, about why professional learning matters. And it matters most for teachers and for leaders because we know teachers, A, are the most influential in terms of student achievement, and then we know, secondly, the leadership in schools determines the success of all the students. And we talked about the importance of effective professional learning in closing achievement gaps and also fostering this sense of collective responsibility, that it's not just about my students, but it's about all of our students. And we also talked about, or maybe I made reference to the fact that the most powerful professional learning, and what teachers tell us they want most, is professional learning that occurs with their colleagues among, it's in that team setting, like you said, when they get to address the real problems of practice that face them five minutes later in the classroom, those students who need their help. And it's key, when we organize professional learning in this way, we make sure that our best practices, our best knowledge moves from classroom to classroom, from school to school, and every student has the potential of experiencing great teaching every day. We also know that great professional learning, someone said this one, begins with the data on the students. Like, what do the students need to know and be able to do? And then from there, we ask the question, if that's what the students need to know and be able to do, then what are the discrete knowledge and skills that teachers need in order to help students be successful? And then we ask, how, what, I'm sorry, what are the changes teachers need to use with students? What are the knowledge and skills they need to be able to do that? And then how do we design professional learning to support that? All of that is that incredible, incredibly important loop that we need to make and we need to think about when we're designing professional learning. So we know that in this state, you all have already adopted the standards for professional learning. Okay? We have them in code. We've said they're important. I always tell policymakers, you can't be in there monitoring all the professional learning, but you know it's important and you want to make sure that educators experience only high-quality professional learning. So what do you do as policymakers? Step one, you adopt standards, and you say, we want our professional learning to meet these standards. And I can tell you, what you just saw happen at Ford Middle School didn't happen without leadership, thinking about how do we make sure that all of the teachers in Allen Public Schools experience great professional learning every day. So it started with, and if you think about those seven standards, it started with a commitment to learning communities, that the primary way in which teachers learn in that school system is by learning with other coll- that school system is by learning with other colleagues. It's not the only way, but it's the centerpiece of their learning. It also occurs because you have leaders in that school system who say professional learning and learning communities are a priority, and they make sure that those teachers have the opportunity and have the instructions about how they use that time for effective learning. It exists because they have resources dedicated to this view of professional learning. There is time. And when needed, there are substitutes who can come in and cover for teachers so that they can all go in and observe one teacher model that instruction. It's driven by data. They were looking at data on their students' performance. It meets their individual needs. There are different learning designs. They started with examining student work. And then, they had one of the members of the team modeling an instructional strategy. They care about implementation. It's not just about hearing about these ideas, but it's holding people accountable for implementing what they learn in those learning teams. So they go in the classroom, they coach, and they get feedback so that they can appropriately use those strategies, use those models with their students. And it's all outcome-driven. It will all be judged on the basis of whether the students perform better on the next formative assessment. Did they understand the concepts? Can they implement the challenge that was put before them? And are we ready to move on to the next outcome that we have for our students? All of that is what you all have put into policy, what you want to see happen for every educator in Kansas. So the question is, what are the different actions that you can take as policymakers to make sure that this is more common than it's more exemplar, I'm sorry, than the exemplar of what happens in a few places in the state? So here's where I'm going to ask you to assess where you are as a policymaker. So I have a tool on the right side of your folder, and there's a quiz there. It says at the top, I folded it over for you, and it says, seven policy shifts that improve professional learning. Did y'all find it in your packets? Okay. And what it recommends for you to consider is, the things on the left where it says "not only" are some things that are typical within states, things that state boards like yours adopt to try and influence the quality of professional learning. But the shifts on the right are the ways in which states promote transformed professional learning. That's required for transforming classroom instruction and getting better results for students. So I ask you individually to score yourself on the seven indicators. So give yourself a one if your policies are predominantly in the "not only" category. Give yourself a two if your policies are moving closer to the "but also" side. And give yourself a three if in your state, the "but also" category defines your current system. Okay? That'll give you something to think about, and then, we'll look at some actions you might take. I'll give you a minute for that. My instructions, okay?
I have a question, honey.
Yes?
So we obviously have to score seven things, but what seven things are there?
These seven right here under "not only."
Under the "not only"?
Yeah. So you're scoring. I guess there's just six. Don't worry about that.
There are seven.
Okay. There were seven, but. My glasses on. So have I given you some things to think about there? I'm not going to ask you to share your scores.
I found it very difficult to answer these questions because in our state, the local districts make most of these decisions. And, you know, there's, it's hard for us to dictate like ours for professional development and things of that sort, so.
Okay, that's a great observation. So a lot of this is not managed at this level at the moment. Okay? Other observations from taking it? Okay, then let me add a few things to think about, and you all can tell me, are some of these, so I'm going to, at the packet that I gave you in the PowerPoint, I'm going to go to the very end, where it says, what are the policy levers that states have in order to influence the quality of professional learning that educators experience? And then, you all can tell me if, which of these are relevant and you might consider in your role at the state, from the state board. Okay? So the first one is, you have adopted the standards, and you can do strictly that. You can adopt the standards, you can adopt a definition of professional learning. Or you can think about, in addition to adopting the standards, there are states where state boards also adopt a vision for professional learning. I know we've been working with the state of Kentucky. They have a new vision for professional learning. They have a new definition of professional learning. But even more important than adopting the vision or adopting the standards is really the question about, you've adopted it, but have you ever asked the state department to come back and report to you on the degree to which teachers are experiencing professional learning according to the standards that you've adopted? Have you asked for annual reports on the quality of professional learning that occurs in the field? We have standards. We would like to know, are the standards influencing practice? And there are ways that you can do that. You can also make sure that your standards are included in any RFPs that you award at the state. And if it, wherever professional learning is part of any requirement approved by the state board, you want to make sure that that professional learning meets your standards. If you adopt a definition, it meets your definition and your vision. You were just having a conversation about what you were going to charge for relicensure, correct? Okay. And my question was, I turned and I said, so what is the requirement for relicensure? Do people just have to accumulate credits? Do they accumulate hours? Do they accumulate years of experience? And then, they stand for relicensure. Shouldn't we re-license educators on the basis of whether they can demonstrate the knowledge and skills that we've adopted and identified as teaching standards in our state? That's the basis on which we think many fields are relicensed. How would they do that? There's a variety of ways that states create relicensure systems that award teachers licenses based on their ability to document how they embrace and use the knowledge and skills expected for their roles. We can talk more specifically about how that can be done. Another way of doing it is, if you are a state right now that's trying to implement new standards, only, and you want to make sure that teachers are getting the professional learning that they need that's aligned to those standards, then you only award credits for professional learning that meets the priorities of the state. It's just another way of thinking about it. You allocate, or you approve calendars, schedules, time, you make recommendations regarding funding. So in many states, states, you know, they kind of debate, how are we going to add a few days to the calendar this year so teachers will have more professional learning? Or how will we find new dollars to support professional learning? Well, we know that in addition to adding days to the calendar, which is really challenging, to do what we just watched in that video, really doesn't require adding days to the calendar. It really requires rethinking how we organize the workday for educators. And when we're open to how we allow schools to organize time and how we allow schools to assign, to create schedules. I don't know the parameters of what is in state board rule in Kansas, but if there are parameters that your school district say limit their flexibility about redoing their schedule to allow for teacher time, I would look at that. Or you could recognize school districts that have reorganized time to support teacher learning. You can make them exemplars, and you can honor them and recognize them here at state board meetings. Here are what we're going for in the state. You know, creating showcase systems and showcase schedules is, people like to be recognized. They like to be honored. When it comes to professional development, you just said that predominantly, it's a local decision. How they design it, how they implement is local. But there are ways in which state boards are actually influencing the quality of professional learning. You have school accreditation rules, and you have your quality, QPA?
QPA.
QPA, I knew it had a Q in there. You have the QPA process. Okay. In the QPA process, do you validate the quality of professional learning that's occurring within those systems in order to accredit the school? Are those two systems tied together? There's another place where you can make sure that high-quality professional learning is monitored through the QPA process. You can also limit the resources that you allocate as a state and make, and tie those to your priorities. And you can look at waivers and funding allocations according to districts meeting the professional development priorities that you set. Here's another few things that states do. And I think in Kansas, you do this as well. You have some requirements regarding plans that need to be submitted to the state department. If you want team-focused collaborative professional learning, do you allow team plans in place of individual plans? It's just another way of thinking about how we support that vision of professional learning. In many places, we continue to offer, and districts continue to build capacity by focusing on menus or giving teachers lots and lots of menu options, or focusing on what teachers need, not necessarily what the data says. We have academies, and we have conferences. So what we can do in a state is just to make sure that everything that we support from the state department focuses predominantly on the priorities of the state department as well as aligns with your standards. We often think of teachers as strictly the implementers of professional learning. In many states, we have teacher advisory committees that give feedback to the state board, to give feedback to the state department about professional learning and how they would like to see professional learning improved and the role that they would like to play in it. Teachers want to be able to have the opportunity to lead, as you know, to facilitate professional learning for others, and to stay in the classroom, and to be able to lead from the classroom. We know that teacher leadership is another area that we're all trying to build in states. And we also know that in many places, a lot of our professional learning is driven by external consultants. Every district has large budgets where they hire expertise from outside. You, as a state board, can make a statement about advocacy for tapping the internal expertise that exists within your school districts and finding ways to support teachers. And you probably have heard the new phrase, "teacherpreneurs," teachers who have a responsibility in the classroom, but they also have a responsibility that's recognized for leading and supporting other teachers. I have to share with you all, which is very special to me today, is because that video that you just watched, so my daughter has been a master teacher in a TAP school for the last three years, and she was, she really wanted to go work in a system that represented what's in that video. She's just been hired as the secondary technology instructional coach, and she'll be coaching those teachers in that video. So it's, and that video was made seven years ago. Really, a small, small world, isn't it? So it's a very exciting day. A lot of states still give national board recognition advancements, and what we have advocated for a long time is, it's not about an advancement in terms of earning the award, it's about an advancement for applying what you know in helping other teachers learn. Now, I recognize not all of these policy levers are ones that you can pull, but I used to think of myself in the school district as Monty Hall. Some of you may remember the TV show Let's Make a Deal or What's Behind Door One, Two, and Three. So if you don't like what I offered behind door one, maybe you like door two or door three, or I just began to slide a door open about some way different in which you think about how you can pull a lever to ensure that promise that you made to teachers in this state and to principals, that they get the quality of professional learning that they so desperately need and want in order to ensure that they can help all students achieve. So I know, together collaboratively, you all can find ways to make that happen as well. So I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Well, I'm looking. I guess mine's not exactly a question, but it kind of is. And I hope this structure is still the same in Kansas as it was when I was working. But at that time, every school district or group of districts would submit an in-service plan for approval every five or seven years, five years. And I noticed there are several on our agenda for approval today. In that plan, they specify how they're going to manage in-service points that teachers can receive for activities. The district that I worked with devised a process for allowing teachers to receive in-service points for being a trainer in their district and sharing their expertise. And then, for teachers that actually could demonstrate in their classroom that whatever they had learned was being successful. And that's been many years ago.
Absolutely.
I think if, at this level, we were looking for those, and I thought it was pretty innovative at the time.
It was.
Anyway, if we encouraged and tried to stimulate districts to move in that direction, it would be one way to start under our structure, you know? And I don't know what, what other incentives there might be out there.
That was a great, and I'm glad you brought that up because I completely forgot that. Kansas was actually the first state that adopted the model of trying to incentivize and award teachers more in-service points if they would not only attend professional learning, but they would document how they used it in the classroom, as well as then the impact it had on their students. Here's a problem, and we can collectively continue to think about how to address it. Not a problem, but a challenge. Only 10%, in the first several years of this, and I don't have last year's data, but only 10% of the teachers in Kansas accepted the incentive. So only 10% took the time to document. Instead, they just said, it's easier just to count the hours and report the hours. And so, we have to find a way because philosophically, the state was on the right page. It had the right idea. But in design, somehow, I guess it became prohibitive for teachers to complete the process. So maybe the incentive needs to be stronger, or maybe, you know, we just need to think about it. But absolutely, I think Kansas was first, and again, in that process, and we just need to continue to make it better.
Thank you.
Is a great example.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You make a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like you to think about three numbers, 331. This is not the integer 331, but three individual numbers, 331. And I submit that in the state of Kansas, or possibly any state of the union, if you were to put all the teachers' names in a hat and draw out seven, you could put them in three categories with 3, 3, and 1. Three teachers would be awesome, exemplary people, people you're just proud to know them. They know how to teach, they're good at it, they love it, they know how to connect with kids, they deserve to have their pay doubled. Then there's another three teachers who are sort of workman-like in their approach. They show up every day or most every day, and they do what they're told, and they appreciate getting a paycheck and summers off. But they're, they're better than decent people, and they're good teachers. And then, there's a seventh one, a single one, is kind of a lemon, just isn't really, not cut out to be a teacher, but for whatever reason, that's where they find themselves. Now, this is the average. And here's what happens. Where I live, in an affluent area, that one in seven drops, the percentage of less... Where I live in an affluent area, that 1 in 7 drops, the percentage of lemons, I'll go with the term lemons to try to be kind. I, I live in the Blue Valley District, and it might be 1 out of 20, it might be 5% who are lemons, or even less. But you go to a hardscrabble district, and that 1 in 7 percentage, that 14 or 15% of lemons, it goes up maybe 20%, 25 sometimes, maybe even more because of so much turnover and the working conditions and all this stuff. And that's what I want to address while I'm here. And I didn't hear anything that you said today that will help me address that. And maybe it's just because I'm a little obtuse, or it's late in the day, or I'm, I'm not very clever, I'm not listening very well. But if there's something in your approach that will help me address that, I would be more than happy to hear it.
Well, I think it goes back to, A, the plan. So let's look at how, what is the plan that we expect from the systems? Like, let's be more prescriptive in terms of districts where there are greater challenges. And I think we can lay out what districts need to do in order to support teachers in places where performance is not where we need it to be for students. So that's one thing. The second thing is that how we invest. Now, I'm going to talk about how we help teachers get better because when we have ineffective teachers, if however you want to define it, that, and these, if they are teachers who do not belong in teaching, that really is a performance evaluation problem, okay? So my expertise is in how do you create the system to help all teachers get better? And my view is that all teachers want to get better, but we don't have the systems in place. So when a teacher works in isolation in a very hard-to-teach school and doesn't get feedback on their performance and doesn't have the opportunity to collaborate and work with other teachers who are having greater success, then all that teacher can do is what they know to do. They don't have information, support, what they need in order to address the challenges they have. That's why in those kinds of systems, we have, we, states will allocate more dollars to put instructional coaches, mentor, master teachers in those schools to help teachers get the ongoing support they need to improve their practice. That's why they organize learning teams, and teachers are required to engage in that onsite professional learning to gain experience with the research-based strategies that will help their students and have been proven to help their students be more successful. So creating a system around those teachers that ensures that they get classroom-based feedback, classroom-based support, ongoing professional learning, and expectation that they work with their colleagues, that they design lessons together, so I'm not, my students aren't experiencing a lesson that I invented solely from my head. It's lessons that we developed collectively, that they have ongoing assessment, formative assessment data that gives them information about how their students can improve. There, those are just some things that we can do, but we can create the school and the district system around to support teachers to get better. And we have different specific models of how we do that. I mentioned to you, my daughter having been in a TAP school, in a school that's 95% Title I, and they have very structured professional learning, and teachers in that school get better and improvement achieves. And the TAP model is one model that a lot of states have embraced in order to help in those, in those kinds of conditions. There are other reform models that exist to help all teachers get better.
Are there other questions or comments?
I'm going to leave, I'm going to meet with State Department people tomorrow. I have kind of an inventory that they can use to examine the policies, and I think we'll start some really important conversation about what can we do to build better systems of support for all educators. I know Lynn has gathered a great group, and they're all, have been very positive about meeting and continuing this work together. So I appreciate this opportunity, I appreciate the question, and like last time, I'll get you some more information to support your question, and, and I appreciate the work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. We've appreciated you coming back to Kansas to help us improve.
You brought me a nice storm.
And there is a meeting this evening just for dialogue?
Yes. Yes, they've got me working hard this time.
Next, we're going to hear from Dale Dennis to start our discussion about budget recommendations.
We've got more than you want, but what we want you to do this meeting is just get you a thinking. And we're going to pop it up here on the screen, and we'll give you a copy of it. Ethan's giving you. Let me tell you where the tough part is, then Brother Ferguson here can add to that, but the big issue is going to be, I think, is the base state aid per pupil. Because, and we'll, we'll see a little bit at the background, and we can go back as far as you want to go, but the issue's going to be, the court's going to decide what it needs to take, and then the board has to prepare a budget before you know what the court's going to do. And so walking that chalk line, what should it be? What will the court say? What can we afford? And all that wrapped into one decision. So this month is just for talking and discussion, and next month, well, then we'll need to, we have to make a decision. But, and what's bad about it too is it's a little unique. We started a new trend, new requirement, and that is that you have to do two years, fiscal '16 and fiscal '17, and it seems like we haven't hardly finished '15 yet, have we? Matter of fact, we got two, three weeks to go on '14. That's the way it is. But anyway, okay, Craig, let's roll it. Ethan, Craig, and I, we're just going to, anybody, I told them that feel free to speak up. Right here on the screen, you can see in '08, '09, we're at 4,400 in the base amount per pupil. And we're now at 3,852. In your professional opinion, what should it be, one? Two is, what will the court say it should be? Number three is, the money that goes with it. And this is by far, I think, the most difficult decision to make in the budget. Okay, Quaid, you may want to comment? Any speeches? All right? No speeches? There is some options, and what the cost would be. Notice this. Now, by the way, these numbers will change next month when we get this year's data all in, and we'll, but it ain't going to change very much. When you're this big a number, it won't be that much difference. 377 million to get back where we were in '08, '09. We show you what it would be if you do nothing? And that's just normal growth. And we have 4,000. Take a look what that base should be. Now, what makes this unique is that in the past, Carolyn, remember the 4,492 was in the law? This year, they took it out. Remember, in the past, the board said, "We just follow the law. We want to support the legislature, so follow the law." Well, now, the 4,492 is gone. I think it makes it a little bit more challenging to make a good decision. Here's '15, '16, then in '16, '17, there isn't much difference, a little bit. You'll see, well, why isn't it going up as much? But all boils down to 20 mil levy. If the 20 mil levy's producing a little extra money, why, then the increase would not be as much. But you can see the additional costs. And remember, remember a little bit ago, it was 377 million, and this computed out 378. That many dollars were, you hope you're within a million or two.
And the people bringing suit, what, 5,900?
That's one of them. Yep, yep. I saw that number, and some material just came out in the last few days. And Steve, on that, if you go back, I know this dangers, and, but I asked the legislature staff, they go through and go, start in 1992 at 3,600 and apply the Consumer Price Index, and I was a little shocked. 6,000 and $1 is what it would be if you used the Consumer Price Index, and that's in 2013.
And that was starting when? It's looking from 2014.
From 1992. Yeah. The, the other thing that's worrisome for the kids, that worries me a little bit, is our teacher salary, we dropped to 42nd in the nation. I've said this publicly, it really bothered me when Missouri passed this. I can handle some of it, but that, that was a little tough. And I told the CPAs that, and they, they thought that was quite interesting. Okay, Craig? The next one is supplemental general state aid. Here's the history of it, and, okay, let's go to the next one. And we've been prorating, and the legislature funded it this year, so to keep up, I don't know, $10 million, maybe, 20 million, you know? I don't. What this boils down to here is how many will vote to go to 33%? Remember, we talked about that a time or two? And they have to do a mail ballot. Many counties cannot do a mail ballot this fall. So they like to do this late fall or spring, it'll be after the elections in all likelihood, but it's, they funded that, so keep that up to date is not a lot of money compared to the total. This is one, guys, that's kind of forgotten a little bit. You don't hear much about it, but it's really significant, and that's special aid. The 92% excess cost used to be very, very significant, but even in 92, 90, or 2010, 11, we're at 92. You can see what's happened since then. We're sliding down. And what that means is, any increase in special aid cost, state aid the same, federal's about the same, they've got to take it out of, of other costs, other, other revenue.
Okay. Back somewhere, and that may be what that A R R A stands for. Remember when we didn't need the table?
We're coming to that in just a minute. Maintenance of effort.
Maintenance of effort.
Yep, I'm glad you, see, what I, the reason I put that up here, see, this is going down, but we got federal funds, and, so I put that in with that, but you put the two together, and that's kind of where we come out with. We've been dropping off pretty rapidly.
Is that the amount we paid back because we didn't need maintenance of effort?
No, no, we never did have to pay hardly anything back, but it took a lot of work, a lot of work. And Governor was helpful in that. About everybody, we had a meeting or two in Governor's office, and everybody was on board trying to keep from losing any of that money. And if you'll notice since then, they've made sure, the Governor and the legislature, that we had maintenance of effort.
So we went back to making maintenance of effort?
Yes, and I'll show you that here in just a minute, because that's just, all that is, is the preceding year. You'll notice we're up a little bit here. This all boils down a little bit to how much they get in school to blind, school to deaf, health and environment, and children and families, if they get any money for kids in special aid. We have to count all that in that calculation. And we end up being the balancer with a larger amount, okay? Now, right here's the point that you made. Here's some options for you to look about, look at, and we can make, there's all kinds of things you can split, or you can put something in the middle. There's 92% roughly in '15, '16. There's 85%. Now, maintenance of effort, that's the, that's just to keep up with the federal maintenance of effort requirement, million two. And I tell you, Sally, that's not an exact science in that, you know, Medicaid could go up a little bit out of health environment, we could get school to blind, deaf, might go up a little bit, and that could be changed, but it's, it's not going to be, maintenance of effort will not be a large number, not a large number. But schools are struggling in that arena because what they got to do is go take it out of regular aid, and honestly, if they can't give. Okay. Here's '16, '17, similar numbers. All-day kindergarten, this is not in law. The board has included that, what, what'd you say, half the time, Ken, the last seven, eight years, not every year, but about a half the time? And that's what it costs. Governor tried it last year, supported it, put it in his budget, but it didn't make it. I think state revenues may have a little effect on that. Okay. All right. Parents as teachers is a statutory thing, and it's stayed the same forever. It used to be paid out of the general fund. Now, we flip-flopped it over, and it's paid out of the tobacco money. Paid out tobacco money, and that's remained the same. Lot, lot of history in, in the support of that program, helping parents help kids. It's as much for parents as it is for kids, but the, the dollar amount has stayed the same, and a lot of that has to do with state revenue. If you wanted to increase it for ever 1,000 students, we'd want to add, which would be 1,000 parents. Well, it's 460,000, and 2,000 double that, leave it flat.
Dale?
Yep.
Isn't, isn't there a lot of tobacco money?
A lot of tobacco money?
Uh-huh.
It's pretty good.
Well, I mean, if it comes out of tobacco money, why couldn't we?
Because it's spent for a lot of other things.
Oh.
We only get to see, Ethan, about 7 million plus here, and we get about 5 million plus in pre-K kindergarten. We only get about 12 million dollars. And the rest of that is closer in the 60 million range, I believe.
It goes to a lot of other.
And it goes, yeah. Children and family gets a lot of it, children's cabinet gets some of it. It's scattered around, but we, that's about what we've gotten for the last few years. But it's closer to 60. If I remember right, I thought this year it was 62 million. That's in the ballpark.
Okay, thanks.
Uh-huh. All right. Teacher mentor in statute, and that program, I remember Senator Dave Kerr was quite interested in that, and there was some research done on that, and the effect of teacher mentors helping retain teachers. We did the research, our folks did here, and Brad, if I remember right, it was what, 15%? I mean, compared without it, with it, without it, that teacher, a good, beginning teacher had a good mentor, there was quite a difference in people staying in the profession after a number of years. But it's not funded. There's what it would take to fund it. Okay.
Might just add, previous speaker talked about developing teacher leaders. This is one way you do it with those mentor teachers.
Yeah, they get, they get some money, help pay for that. Professional development, this is by statute, and it's half 1% of the general fund, or the actual expenditures, whichever is lower, and that hadn't been funded for a number of years. That was another one, Ken, that Dave Kerr used to watch. He, he was very close to the line to that, that make sure we got our monies worth. He always asked about that. But it hadn't been funded in recent history. There's what it costs to fund it, and that's conservative. If we started that program and, and, and we require, that's be, programs have to be approved, the dollar amount would gradually go up, but it'd take a while to crank up. Those numbers are pretty accurate. The board, this is not statute, not statute. The board, on occasion, has supported decreasing the mileage. Most adults do not walk two and a half miles to school or to work, wherever. So the question arose, if we cut it in half from two and a half miles to a mile and a quarter, how much would it cost us? There's a lot of districts, rural and urban, who transport kids under two and a half miles for the safety of the child. Wichita does, I know quite a few, and that's tough to do because you, you pick areas that's safe and where not. Kansas City, Kansas does, but just for the safety of the children. I remember on this one, I believe it was Justin Henry spoke at the committee on Goddard, stood before the committee, he made the comment about asking kids to walk across 54 Highway because he has territory on both sides. And that, you know, they're west of Wichita. He said, "They can't do that." So his board made a policy, "We'll, we'll transport them."
Everyone.
Pardon?
I think they do everyone.
Yeah. Okay. And school lunch, the law says 6 cents per meal, and we haven't done that for years, about 4.4. And I tell you, that's And I tell you, that's maintenance of effort. The two million, five, back up this here, that two million, five, ten, forty-six will let us meet maintenance of effort for the federal funds, and that generates a hundred and some million dollars, but, and we don't have to, and they've chose not to. It's six cents per meal is what the statute provides, all right? Maintenance of effort, they don't have to add any. Capital outlay state aid, this is part of the court case, and you'll notice, and I want to explain that, because the budget had twenty-five point two million. Now, you say, where'd that come from? That's what they would have gotten last, this year? That's what they would have gotten this year had we funded it. But think about this, we funded the LOBs, remember? We funded the LOBs. We've had, I don't know how many calls. They fund the LOB, that's going to lower the property tax for the local option budget. There's a lot of districts where the mail levy is going down. A lot of Boards of Education will highly likely raise capital outlay levy. Sally talked one in your district, I think there's zero capital outlay, and they're going to go to eight mils. They got authority to dodge, but their mail levy will still go down a little bit, because they're relatively poor, and they do well on the LOB state aid. So you're going to see a lot of districts, I believe, with low valuation, and we think it'll go up for up, roughly ten million dollars in that arena. We figured it, I think Wichita's going to raise their capital outlay, and that'll eat up quite a bit in a hurry, so that's probably conservative. That's also a demand transfer, comes off the top.
Is that the one that some of the local banks are...
No.
That's not that issue?
No. The local banks, some of them are disturbed, that's another one, because the twenty mil levy, remember? The twenty mil levy, they put it in one of the bills, two forty-five, I think. Anyway, the twenty mils comes to the state, and it will not stay local. And that twenty mils produces about five hundred and sixty, seventy million dollars. So that will come to the state, and normally, when they got their money, they get about half of it, and January the twentieth, they get another half, or another forty percent plus, June the fifth, and if they went to local banks until they spend it, particularly the January one, it will not go, that'll come to the state.
So it comes to the state, but then the state sends it back. But in the meantime, they collect the interest on the money.
Based upon need, I mean, on the formula, they'll be, yeah. What we'll do, we'll fund schools in general fund, in essence, for the first six months. We always do that. But starting in January, they got their tax money, so we back state aid off. Now we're going to switch it over, and we'll have to pay it out of the twenty mil levy. We'll start paying that. The big chunk will go out February first, and then there'll be another chunk going March. We'll have it spent by the end of March. Ag in a classroom, no statute. The Boards supported that in different times, we left it in. There's none now. Communities and schools, they succeeded in getting two hundred and fifty thousand last year, or year before last, thirteen, fourteen, this current year, and got it fourteen, fifteen. They did that on their own, with proper lobbying. There's, they've been here many times, environmental aid, and that's your call, not in statute. National Board certification, Governor in support of this, it's back. Remember, National Board certification, it's back. So you'll get to hear that, and remember, they get National Board certified, they get certificate, their license will be for ten years, so forth. And that'll cover it. Go ahead. Pre-K pilot, this is some more tobacco money, and that's money that was handed off to us from the children's cabinet, and it goes to some pre-K programs across the state that was getting it at that time. They still continue to receive that. Do you want to go back up to where it once was? It was five million, and we got cut, and it's four eight now, so do you want to leave it like it is, or do that? That'll be the question, all right? Tech ed transportation, that's been, by the way, not done yet, but those certificates, you know, the certificates, kid completes the certificate, they get, a school gets a thousand dollars? I don't, I have not got it yet, but from Jay, but I believe that the number will be close to double last year. Close to double. So the certificates, they've really done well. Schools deserve gold stars on that one. Discretionary grants, that's just two after-school programs, it's been there for quite some time. We cut them in half, and that's what's left. That's it. Okay, that's just something for you to think about, and then next month, we'll talk about trying to make decisions, and wanted to kind of visit with you and get you... Now, we have a couple, three things else to give you. Yes, very quick. They're tired. I want you to know a little bit of what we've tried to done to help that tax credit scholarship bill. I won't spend much time on it, but that's a lot, that's going to be a lot of work for us, and to try to help them, we've had meetings with the private schools, we have meetings with legislators, and try to, we got another one we'll do right after the election, November, and so forth, but I just want to skim it in a hurry, and tell you what it is, and if anybody wants to join us in that meeting, they're welcome. We listed all the guidelines to begin with. There's a couple of pages of those, and we put the section where the guidelines come from. There's two things, and we've told everybody that, and everybody was supportive of it thus far, two things, and that's items sixteen and nineteen, interpretation, but sixteen is that you have to have the money if you give them a scholarship. We think it'd be really, really bad if you gave a kid a scholarship and didn't have the money to pay for it. And number nineteen is, you, granting organization called SGO, Scholarship Granting Organization, will pay for the students monthly, and the reason for that one is, if they transfer schools, and they give them all the money, it's going to be hard to get it back. So they'll get, they'll pay that monthly, and due to time, you can see, and it only applies to free lunch kids that are in focus and priority schools. I had a call today from one in, now in Kathy, you and Jim's area, and they're a high school. They was interested in this, and reviewed it, and they said, well, all the schools on focus and priority about, in our area are elementary, and we just have a high school. So we're not going to get anything, are we? And I said, well, not at this time. Also, we got a page in there, the third page over, is some, we may have to do rules and regs. They told us in the statute, it says we have to do it on one section. We rough something out, but the people across the streets, they don't get in too big a hurry, but they said, you know, it'd be nice if you had a little experience before you jumped into this. All right, now, we'll do this in a hurry, but this is just to help along the schools that, see the one that says application on it? One of the forms, I'm just going to hit the high spots on the forms. That's the application that the SGO has to give us. Scholarship granting organization, they apply, they have to be a 501(c)(3), they have to be audited by the CPA, they have to file an annual report, so forth. The part that worries me a little bit, and I told the legislators that, that we met with, they have a surety bond, that's no problem. Great. Then it has a financial statement, and Craig made a good point about the financial statement.
Everybody's aware that Enron had really good financial statements.
You get a good financial statement, but you don't know, but if surety bond, you're protecting, it don't cost much, for no one we're talking about. Okay, next page over is, we have to certify the scholarship granting organization, that they exist, and they're a 501(c)(3), it can be anybody out there. The next one, and this is going to be a little bit of a challenge, we have to verify the students, every student has to be verified. But to do that, the parent, or the parents has to sign a release to the scholarship granting organization, the 501(c)(3). They have to sign a release that we can provide the data to them, the parents does. And so they'd send in this release, tell us who it is, we'll lock it up, and say, are they attending a priority or focus school, and notify them. The next one is what schools, if you're out there raising money, so forth, from corporations, the next one is, what schools are you raising money for? What schools are you wanting money for? And we had one call that said, well, I'll tell you what, I'm raising money only for my school. And there'll be some, though, that'll be more than one. It's up to them. The SGO can make that decision. And they raise the money from corporations and insurance companies, why seventy percent of what they give to the SGOs, why they get to count that against their income tax directly.
Would you hit that again? The contributors have to designate what schools their funds are...
They'll give it to an SGO.
Yeah.
And the SGO, then, whatever schools that they, they're working with, who does get the money. They might have one, two, three, four schools. But they wouldn't designate what school got it, but they have to give it to the SGO, the scholarship granting...
So I'm just not clear on how that works. Does the SGO go out and solicit schools that want to participate?
They may, or I imagine the schools will come to them.
Yeah, okay.
They'll come to them, and then the scholarship granting organization, they're going to have to go out and try to raise the money from the corporations or any one. See, what's interesting about this, Ken, say you were a triple, multiple millionaire or whatever, and you want to contribute, unless you're a corporation or insurance company, you can't do that. You don't want to come some. And so individuals cannot do that.
Interesting.
It's interesting, but in this case here, they, it doesn't go to a specific school, I don't believe, but it goes to the SGO.
Excuse me. Does the SGO, can they require a fee for administering this or something?
I'm glad you brought that up. We brought this up to the legislators that we met with on this. The law says that you have to spend ninety percent of the money within thirty-six months. That's by statute. I said, well, what about the other ten? Does that mean the other ten carries over, and you can spend it in the fourth year for scholarships? Or does it mean you get ten percent for administrative costs? Well, one of them says, yeah, that's pretty high, I don't, with ten percent, somebody donated a million dollars, that'd be a hundred thousand dollars administrative cost, that's pretty good for, you know, so...
Hot fees.
And so, yeah, so they're going to, that's one they're going to review, but the extra ten percent, you know, there's CPA, he'll do it for you. But you think about it, it don't, the law's silent. The ninety percent's got to go within three years, thirty-six months, for scholarships, but the other ten percent, it just don't speak to it. And we asked several legislators that was involved in this, and I said, we need to look at that. They didn't know. One of them says, we ought to put a cap on how much for administration and all that, and I said, well, that's your, that's up to you, but right now, we're out of it. I mean, we don't have any control over that part. Okay, the also...
Dale?
Yep.
Kathy Bush has a question.
Kind of related to that. Hasn't the legislature in the past, if administrative costs in a district get up above four percent, they don't like that?
For some, that's true.
And yet, this is sitting at ten.
Well, you don't know. Kathy, in a way, it just says ninety percent must go for the scholarship, but the other tens...
It's not spoken for.
Yes, it's un, it's not labeled, don't know. Good point. Okay, also, Craig, what's this? This is the eligibility verification. The next one is, yeah, the list, the kids that they verify. Now, and the reason we have to do that is you got a cap of eight thousand dollars. You couldn't give one kid, you can't go with a cap. The next one, and this is a tough one, folks, we may hear about this one a little bit more than some, and also, they agree with this, and that's a waiver of special aid services? That gets really sticky, and the private schools are not excited about it either. With me? Because right now, we have a lot of special aid folks that may go over to a private school to provide services, because it's more economical than to bring the kids over there. That's not unusual. But this one, they have to waive all special aid services, and the law says the scholarship can continue to provide it, but this waiver says they don't have to, and some of them was worried about what the Office of Civil Rights might say on that topic. With me? Yeah. Well, you've been preaching the opposite of that, Kathy, for years. So anyway, I'm not, I don't know anybody's in love with that particular piece on either side, because, anyway, they brought that up, and we met with some of the private school folks. Okay, the other one is, this is just a little form, that where the scholarship granting organization, or a school can request to participate with a SGO. This not, doesn't affect us, but it goes to the organization. We're just trying to be helpful, so if a school wants to participate, they can submit it to the SGO.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
What, Dale, does the law specify the qualifications for a school to participate?
I'm glad you asked that.
I am too.
Yeah, it's very clear, none.
No qualifications, so just a private school?
A private school that's meeting the eleven hundred and sixteen hours qualifies. And they, and I, and they, but it was intentional. There is no state assessments, there's nothing required in accountability on the education side. And I asked, what, we had three, four of them the other day, we asked them, do we understand that correctly? They said, yes.
So, does a homeschool count as a...
Could. Could, if the SGO will give you a scholarship.
So somebody could work for a corporation, have a scholarship, and give it back to their employee to homeschool?
They can't decide who gets it. The SGO has to decide that.
Statute clearly says the corporation cannot designate, the money will go to this child or that child.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can designate who the SGO is.
They have to set up a 501...
They can choose the SGO.
Yeah, yeah.
SGO, but then their corporation?
Well, no, not really. It has to be, 501(c)(3) has got to be separate from a corporation. Yeah. Okay, the last one, and I've told you more than you want to know probably about this, but the also, this last one is, they have to file an annual report, and this law's going to get confusing for some, even us. Some things are on a calendar year, like taxes, the contribution is all tax year, the reports are on a fiscal year. So there's going to be some confusing, and this is just an annual report, and what they have to do, and certified by an accountant. Okay. Yeah, we're going to give you two or three things, and one is, if you want to come to budget workshops, you're welcome, the price is right. And the second one is, I thought you might want to know all the candidates, and who filed for what, and who the opponents are, and Craig's going to give you that. Craig, oh. And Denise has volunteered to give you a copy, if you want it. You want a copy of the, these are, is a summary, a draft copy of the, I got memory right, a draft copy of the legislative bills they passed? And it's just very brief?
Thank you.
And if you want it, fine, if you say, no, I don't want that thing, that's okay too.
Out of the top of your head, can you remember if they changed when the local school boards would have their option?
I don't think it passed. I don't believe it's true. No, I don't think so. Madam Chairman, I know that's more than you wanted to know, but anyway, some of that might be of interest, particularly that list of candidates and all offices, and that legislative summary, if you want to find, if you don't. The reason it's got draft on it is, we're a little bit spooked a little bit. We keep learning more things we didn't know, that we didn't know, one, and two is, there's some challenges on constitutionality, this, that, and the other, and so, anyway, so we'll have draft on it for right now. Anything else? Thank you very much for your time, your effort, and we appreciate it, and look forward next month to making decisions.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda and approval of that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda and approval of that. Steve Roberts, you had pulled item 16D?
D, yes.
Did you have a opportunity to visit with people in the department about your concerns? Where are you on that?
I did. We're talking about approval of local in-service education plans.
Right.
And I'm more than happy to relinquish control of 16D, because, you know, I want things to move on. But I, I would just like to ask the question, if, if this is the right way to do this sort of business, are we really, should the state board be approving these local in-service education plans? Because I had the chance to look at one today, and then Lynn redacted one, so that I wouldn't use anyone's name, or, you know, the number of the USD. But I, I don't know, I just, it, it just, they say, okay, it's up to us to approve these, but I don't really know anything about them, and I would like to know more about them, and I just don't know if this is the right way to do this sort of business. I just want to ask that question.
Are you saying that you think we personally need to approve them? As a board?
Well, apparently, it falls to us to approve these, right? If it's in our.
Well, there are a lot of things that we put our snap of approval on, that we don't have the expertise, or training, or time to review all of them, but that is a discussion that we can have later. I do thank you for your interest and concern.
I, I think that is a discussion to have later, yes.
Okay, thanks. So you're saying it's all right to include that item in the consent agenda approval?
Yes, I, I would suggest we put 16D back in the.
Okay, thank you. Then I would ask for a vote to approve the consent agenda. We had added some items to it this morning, and that was approved. So Kathy Bush moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there a, Deana Horst seconds the motion. Is there discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. The next thing we have on our agenda is an executive session. So I'm going to give this to Sally Cobble to move.
I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed. This session will last no longer than 20 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. We would like to invite the Commissioner Brad New in Swander to join this executive session. Is that better?
Let's have it begin at 10 minutes after 5:00, so we will have a 10-minute break before.
Oh, okay. At 5:00 after?
10:00 after 5:00.
And.
Until 5:30.
Till 5:30.
Is there a second to the motion, seconded by Carol Lynn Campbell? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We will reconvene at 10 minutes after 5:00.